Okay. Here again, the apologies for the way sometimes technology is the best of us. That's the end for the rest of the year. Well, this is hereby given to Rockport City Council a whole regular meeting on Tuesday, August 10th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. Meeting will be held in person if you make use of the non-registered sec. Voice 751, State Highway 35 podcast, Rockport, Texas, Social Assistance Guidelines, and using the video conference application soon. On temporary suspension of the Open Meetings Act will allow all members of the video conference followed meetings to be granted by Governor Grant's habit. These actions are being taken to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 by avoiding meetings that bring people into a blue setting in accordance with Section 418.016 for the Texas government code. Video conference capabilities will be utilized to allow individuals to address the city council. Members of the public participate if the meeting protocol is assumed. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Attorney General has said statutes of maybe in turn require participation interaction with members of the public when public officials are suspended. Provided, however, that the governmental bodies must offer alternative methods of communicating with their local officials. Public participation is valued if citizens wish to express their views on any conference agenda item and electronic assistance to citizens or patients informed in order to register to speak by going to Rockport by side. For attending the meeting in person, register at the meeting. Use the form assistance and also provide written comments to the city secretary by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting. The mail-in comments will be submitted in the midst of the meeting. I'd like to take a roll call for attendance, Ward 1.
Here.
Ward 2.
Here.
Ward 3.
Here.
Ward 4.
Here.
Mayor here. The time is 6:44 and I call in to work. Please see the front of the House of Representatives. Please let me introduce.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and as a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I could have a point here and order.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just want all thanks to one on the world of the nation, state, and local. Uh, I just like to have a debate before we start the meeting.
Your pardon. Please.
Chief Baron, would you please put?
This is very good. God, our fellow, we thank you for this day and the privilege and honor we have to come together in a place in a country that's free, where people have arrived with their opinions and the people have arrived to express their opinions, but with those rights go an obligation to listen. We thank you, God, that we're together here and everything that's done in this meeting to benefit our community will be done in a way that's pleasing to you, whatsoever it's in all we do, in your name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Baron. I'm the chief. I have number three, citizens to be heard. At this time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience. For persons who have assigned a student's card located on the table of the faculty section of a service center and be delivered to the city secretary before the meeting begins, or read the comments received by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting on any set of matter that is allowed in agenda will be read by the mayor and summarized in the midst of the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council and who have registered these assistance participation forms will have up to three minutes. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take action on any act that is not imposed upon you generally. All serve of the purpose is not included. Sore conduct in the service of the peace as prohibited by law shall be tossed to the chair terminated by this time of speaking. We have opposed the due persons to speak. I've got, uh, some citizen participation forms that were received earlier today. This is from Amber Clark, 510-5870 Street, Rockport, Texas. Uh, this is on future land use map and comprehensive plan. She wants to state her end of the record. Because the future land use map, FLM, is not accurately aligned with the residency goals of the plan, we strongly oppose the FLM as proposed in the plans of the city council approval. It needs to be corrected to actively reflect the intent for census of the public to protect the function and the floodplain mitigation systems of our community. As stated in the plan, plan use needs to align with the hazard mitigation plan, floodplain management plan. As a former floodplain manager and community planner, I am very familiar with the intent of these documents. I also know the significance of the FLM in the public decision-making process. With the record, we request the city amend the FLM by designating the entire block of land, bounded by Olden Beach Road, Trailer, Scott, and Henderson, a single family with Conservation District subdivision overlay. Additionally, we request the moratorium on additional development of this land until Conservation District design standards can be adopted. As stated in the plan, conservation subdivision design helps units protect vulnerable natural and cultural assets without reducing residential densities. Design secure more land for wildlife habitat, collaboration, and retention of formal art realm, and maintain the natural environment. The community feels very strongly about this particular natural asset. This would reflect the public record topics at the 3 and 7th vote during the table of 2021. This area is specifically a then-aligned map that the 2019 guide would develop in the city of Rockport, Arizona, Texas. If this property is not responsibly developed or disturbed, it will have adverse impacts on surrounding property. Range, Olden Beach Road, and Little Bay. This one is from Robert Hewitt, 401 South Olden Beach Road, Rockport. Wants to spread it to the record. And it's from.
Is it possible to turn up the mic? I'm struggling to hear.
I can hear you. My hearing aids.
I'll try speaking a little bit louder.
Oh, that's great.
My name is Ben Smith, and I am the attorney for Mr. Robert Hewitt. We strongly oppose the future land use map, FLM, as currently granted in the proposed comprehensive plan. You have either heard or will hear from Mrs. Amber Clark, who has thoughtfully considered and articulated the myriad issues with the FLM. In addition to inherent issues within the FLM, we are concerned about the demands and strain unchecked development could cause the Olden Beach Road in the very fabric of the neighborhood. The current roads that serve the residents and shops and restaurants can barely handle the current traffic congestion. Olden Beach Road and its cross streets also serve as access points to the many residents of Keelag Road and Allegro North. We believe that the city and/or county and their taxpayers will need to upgrade the current roads, including the constant street erosion, along with the sewers and utilities. Our proposal is the same as Mrs. Clark's. We request the city amend the FLM by designating the entire block of land bounded by Olden Beach Road, Trailer, Scott, and Henderson, a single family with a Conservation District subdivision overlay. And then we have some people that wish to speak. Um, Judy Bell. And before we ask people, please state their name and address for the record.
Hello.
Will you turn your mic on?
I live at 103 Sugar Creek Drive in Country Club Square. And this is Judy Morrison that lives in Country Club Square also. So, uh, my time is ticking. Mayor, council members, thank you so much for allowing us to speak and for all you do and dedication to the race discount. Uh, I'm reading this for Judy, and she's gonna pass out some pictures. And we all, our group here, are from the Country Club Square HOA. So, from Judy, my name is Judy Morrison, and I represent Country Club Square Homeowners Association. We're a 77-unit townhome community located at the northwest quadrant of business I with 35 and Trailer Boulevard. Our community is bisected by the city of Rockport, own drainage channel that is 60 feet in width. A significant stormwater drainage from the Rockport Country Club neighborhood and golf course must drain through this channel of Tulley Creek and ultimately into Tulley Creek behind Ace Hardware. Should flow in this drainage channel be restricted, our townhome community would experience devastating flooding. Country Club Square HOA has maintained the vegetation modally wack, this parcel, for many years at our expense. In the past several years, the HOA has solicited bids for our landscape maintenance. It's evident that the vendors must charge significantly more for the maintenance of the drainage channel. Uh, we know that you have the equipment with the swing arm that can take care of this issue. We're not, we don't, we're not on a long area of Tulley Creek, but the, our landscapers won't even go down there because of water moths and the height of the weeds. So this is a pretty serious thing with us. Our HOA fees, a third of ours, go toward the lawn maintenance, but we don't have the, um, the fees to do what this is required. So it's, uh, this is, um, this is called vendor management difficulties and financial hardship. Why doesn't HOA have to maintain property that is Tulley Creek, whether it's the Navigation District or City of Rockport, uh, we know that y'all have the equipment, City of Rockport, with the swing arm that can take care of this for us. Country Club Square, darn it!
Thank you, Ms. Bell and Ms. Morrison. Got it? Got it? Sandy Swanson.
Good afternoon. My name is Sandy Swanson, and I am representing first and presbytery church. Have you finally realized that our church was flooded, significantly flooded? And, uh, we're, we're facing a lot of costs of the late construction overruns that we have been planning on financially. But one of the things that has brought to our attention and the reason I'm here to come to you today is the fact that the culvert on the corner of Magnolia and Highway 35 is completely clogged. There's no way that the water could have drained over the daylight. It backed up onto Magnolia Street and actually picked up our dumpster and took it to the corner of our building and placed it there. What I'm here today is to ask, is there a plan that the city has for cleaning these culverts and ditches? We, um, we can't not, we're not physically, nor should we be required to go under a state highway to clean the drainage. So I'm asking you today, is there a plan for regular cleaning of these culverts and ditches? And if so, when are you going to clean this culvert in case you now have no others? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kristen Marty.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Marty, and I live at 13 Cedar Ridge Road. And I've learned a lot of things in the last little bit. I've learned that I moved to an area of flooding. I learned that some of my neighbors who are definitely older than I am, elderly, who need medical assistance, when there's a water event in the area, will not receive that. Halo can't land, ambulances can't get to the road. And so at first, I heard those things and learned those things and saw the water and watched the ponds breach in my backyard and, you know, you go through those things. But then I went and learned from my neighbors that they were promises would never happen again, that there's a settlement agreement that has been ignored by the city. That was their two cents. They are unable to be here, they are my neighbors. I am here on their behalf to say they need medical assistance and having just no plan when the city in the past, apparently before most people here, has known about this, is not the way to handle it. So, that said, you also have a budget in front of you. You also have newer people from the council. I would encourage you to not listen necessarily to exactly what you're given. This is how it's always been done. This is, here's the budget, this is how much it's gonna be. And I would encourage you, I gave you a note today, to research things, to talk to people. I was shocked to her, to hear that, you know, one of my wonderful neighbors had been promised, and she was tearful, that they were promising this would never happen again. And only then, I can't imagine if you guys do it. So a budget that doesn't even talk about drainage, just because it hasn't in the past or the same people are providing the same information, doesn't mean you have to do it like it's always been done. And if you don't have access to an attorney, a city attorney, or you have somebody who's watching the plot and not even, not allowing people to make those phone calls, I'm giving you a free resource. The city provides, of course, dues to TML, and those attorneys can help you with asking about, hey, what's being done? Because I can guarantee you, next time you look at the budget and there's litigation costs because of our previous settlement agreement and a widow who's promised it would never happen again, it won't be something that is, that I would suggest is a simple decision today. And that is to take care of what the city used to take care of. Mr. Chris, if it hasn't been done in the world, it's going to be a disaster. Thank you.
Yeah. Jean Hooker.
I'm Jean Hooker, 210 Oak Bay in Rockport, number 603. I'm representing the Rockport Country Club about the drainage issues we're facing. I'm here today to ask you not to pass this budget as it stands and to fund the drainage repair agreement. Several people, including me, addressed the council on July 20th at the City of Rockport Master Drainage Workshop. You've heard from several concerned citizens, many of whom were severely impacted by the recent flood event, that the drainage system is in dire need of attention and debt. Here we are tonight, considering yet another budget that provides nothing new to address any of the problems. We're astonished by this. Since we spoke last, the damage to the drainage system continues to become more apparent. There are five new sinkholes in the road near the intersections of Henderson and Merritt Streets. These have been filled with Kalachi base, which is doing nothing to fix the root cause problem. On the contrary, it's probably doing more damage. These sinkholes are continuing to sink since the recent patches. If you recall, this is the area I pointed out to you before. It's getting worse, and we haven't had another big rain event. But one is coming, it's only a matter of time. In the meantime, flood insurance will go up because of the increase in flood claims. People, real people, like the elderly widow you heard from last time, will have their lives turned upside down by having to move out of their homes that flooded so badly. Can you really sustain and continue your position of doing nothing? What kind of tragedy will the next flood event bring? What happens when an ambulance can't get to people and a resident tragically dies? I'm asking you to please stop this budget from going through tonight unless you can find and allocate money for the drainage problems. This needs to be addressed now. We simply can't continue to kick this problem down the road. You know, you can't just continue to do nothing and expect better results. So many mayors and so many city councils have failed to properly address the drainage problems. Are you gonna be the ones to finally make the difference? What will your legacy be? Your community is counting on you to do the right thing. And the right thing to do now is to honor your legal and moral obligations to repair and maintain the drainage system, prevent further property damage, and possibly harm to human life. Thank you.
Erin Foster. She's got a letter. Wants it read. "August 10, 2021, to whom it may concern, our home at 219 Eleventh Drive, Rockport, Texas, 78382, on the corner of Colonial and Olive, flood with current estimated cost repairs exceeding $100,000. The intersection and connected streets flooded in every direction to death several feet. Pond behind our house on the number one green overflowed to our old home, as did the pond across the street on the number two tee box. Pond on number five green and number six tee box also overflowed in the street contributing to the flood of our property. It is our understanding that the underlying reason for this flood, the 20-inch rain not withstanding, was, is the city of Rockport's failure to address the plight of proper remedies cooling the regimens of the drainage system to this area. If that is the case, we would like to know what is being done to solve these drainage issues to prevent future flooding of our property. Please place this question and the corresponding answer on your agenda for today's hearing and any future hearing regarding this matter. Thank you, Geraldine Karen Foster, 219 of Olympia Drive, Rockport, Texas." And the last one I have is from Helen Mirrod. She's got a letter, and she's asking that it be read by Andrea Hatton.
I am Helen Doran, living at 116 Cedar Ridge Drive for the past 29 years. This was by far the worst flood I have experienced here. I blame it on the fact that the drains or culverts are not properly maintained. Since her can't hurry, I have called the city several times, as have my neighbors, reminding them that allowing natural debris to accumulate is leading towards disaster. This is the result. Although I have a foundation 14 inches above ground level, my entire house was under a flip of water. It's time the city step up to the responsibilities.
Are you seeing out here, a listing of the 2D drainage system that is known as Rockport Country Club? And these are the different areas that empty into it, and it's not just Rockport Country Club.
Good afternoon. I'm Adelaide Marlette. I'm here tonight to ask you, what do you mean when you tell us you have no money? The people represented here tonight are from 11 different major subdivisions, businesses, and notable residential developments. This listing that I have put out here will give you an idea of just who all dumps their water into the system of 2D drainage known as RCC system. We took time to determine that this represents about 1,000 property dollars, and if you do 2.5 people per house, you come up with 2,500 people. 2,500 people represents 26% of the Rockport citizens in the last reported census. When you say no to that many people, do you feel good? In the last year, the Rockport pilot has reported that you've come up with a lot of money. Let me tell you a few. On February 4th, the city held a planning workshop, and therein was a list of capital needs that sent the city's share of the downtown Rock, uh, anchor project was $4 million. That was February 4th. On June 23rd of the same year, you were asked to sign off on a certificate of obligation listing for $20 million of that. About 14 million was for the downtown anchor project. That's a big change. No comment about, no, there's no money. Then, we went further because on August 21st, that did not go through as Mayor Rios reminded me. But on August 31st of that same year, just a few months later, you passed a general obligation of $14,700,000. All of a sudden, you knew what the money was, where you could come up with the money. We, you have the money to do your own house and to do the drainage enhancements to protect it. Can you come up with money to do, to help us protect our own homes? We can't go on like this. We just don't believe when you say that you don't have money. I was saying to a budget workshop the other day that you talked about the INS rate blocking. It is at 18 cents. If you want to keep it, you will come up with a budget of, you know, listing of projects or finances. Put priority to Rockport Country Club and the, this listing of all of these 11 different components that dump into that. And one of the things I have on this picture is something that shows you what we drain through. Can this drain that? That's what we've been trying to do for 35 years, 1985 technology. Hold the budget until you get it straight and you add some things part, this part of truly drainage system.
Thank you. Ken Baron.
Mayor, name?
I'm Ken Baron. I really throw cascades in Rockport Country Club. There seems to be a common theme here. I'm asking the city to add a budget to repair the source in Rockport Country Club. Uh, my opinion that they're partially plugged. I've installed many stormwater systems in the past. They're not draining properly. Took four days for some of our streets to drain after the storm ended in July. There was water in my front yard of some beaking, and schools of fish swimming around. There were other areas within the country level of water supply. And the problem is, the system needs to be maintained. I've got some pictures here. They show drainage on a typical pond in the Country Club, drains by a pond system from one pond to the next through a series of ditches or drains, drain pipes. And the ponds are only designed to be about 18, 18 inches to 24 inches deep. There is a high-level drain and a Jason Polo drain next to it, very similar to your that. And pictures will show that, um, these ponds are filled with sediment, probably 12 inches to 18 inches from the bottom of the drain. So it is similar to you putting a foot of sand in your bathtub and pulling the plug and expecting to get the drain. It's not going to. So, uh, there's also other debris that, I've got pictures up here, that will get into the drain system and cause it to flood. And it's my understanding that it's the city's responsibility for the drains, and I'm asking you to do your job and do the maintenance of the drainage systems because they're gonna continue to flood, and we're gonna continue to flood until you do something about it. I'd like to provide some pictures.
I'm Ken Baron. I really throw cascades in Rockport Country Club. There seems to be a common theme here. I'm asking the city to add a budget money to repair the source in Rockport Country Club. My opinion that they're partially plugged. I've installed nine mini stormwater systems in the past. They're not draining properly. Took four days for some of our streets to drain after the storm ended in July. There was water in my front yard of some beaking, and schools of fish swimming around. There were other areas within the country level of water supply. And the problem is, the system needs to be maintained. I've got some pictures here. They show drainage of a typical pond in the country club, drained by a pond system from one pond to the next through a series of ditches or drains, drain pipes. And the ponds are only designed to be about 18, 18 inches to 24 inches deep. There is a high-level drain and adjacent hollow drain next to it, very similar to your that. And pictures will show that these ponds are filled with sediment probably 12 inches to 18 inches from the bottom of the drain. So it is similar to you putting a foot of sand in your bathtub and pulling the plug and expecting to get into drain. It's not going to. So there's also other debris that I've got pictures up here that will get into the drain system and cause it to flood. And it's my understanding that the city's responsibility for the drains, and I'm asking you to do your job and do the maintenance on your drainage systems because we're going to continue to flood. We're going to continue to flood to do something about it. I'd like to provide some pictures. This is a overflow drain. And you can see that the sediment is now way above bottom drain. So whenever anybody pulls the plug in the bottom drain, all of a sudden it just goes regular pipes, it's flood coming up. Some of the top drains are plugged by some of the winds and cat heels going in there. You can see that now the ponds really only have, asking for about six inches of water because they're full of sediment. And this is additional pictures of what's happening to the ponds. The problem is too much of the pond.
Dennis Parker, 203 Olympic Drive, Rockport, Texas. For making, for comments, do you guys have a plan in the next three months or so doing anything with Rockport Country Club drainage? I mean, you've got a budget, everything else. Even possible for you to do something?
This is a citizen you heard.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and make my comments then.
The law doesn't allow us to respond to questions.
Okay, okay. So I mentioned this last time, I came from refinery industry. I've come in and talked to, there's several, the one I'm familiar with that does the great big majority of businesses up and down the Gulf Coast, all the way from Calveston, Port Arthur, Victoria, La Baca, whatever, Sunbelt Rens. I'm going to meeting with Jimmy Deves in the next few days. Come in, he's going to look at the country club, look at what it takes, put in some temporary pumps, pipe to handle a big rainfall event in the next three months in case it happens. Get the cost for it. I guess if you guys are interested in the same thing, I invite you to some of these other areas in the city. If you want to talk to him about similar solutions, I don't know if the city would be in participation or not. I think at this point, we're just ready to do something besides getting flooded.
Thank you for your comments. Moving on to the consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be reviewed by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members so request. In which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its own sequence on the agenda. Council, if you wish to remove an item from the consent agenda.
No. No. Salute.
I have a motion to adjourn here in a second from this desk. Roll call, or one?
Aye.
Or two?
Aye.
Or three?
Aye.
Or four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye, thank you. Head number six. Another public hearing on a proposal to possibly increase solid waste, waste, solid waste water, wastewater, and natural gas rates for all customers. Time 7:16, and public hearing is over. Anyone who would like to comment on the proposal to possibly increase rates?
Katie's going to introduce it.
Katie. So I'm reading to you all tonight. Thank you. Okay, let's have this get. So I'm reading to you tonight proposals to increase all regular rates of water, wastewater, natural gas, and solid waste. The solid waste is a direct pass-through with 3.5% increase driven off of the CPI produced by the public services. The water rates, the wastewater rate, and the gas rates are all portion, part of our annual rates study that we do with NIGEM. I believe we do have Matthew Eric on the Zoom in order to answer any questions specific to. We did provide you all the same information during the budget workshop. The proposed budget that you'll see later tonight does include these proposed increases. They're moderate, very minimal. At least for water and wastewater. Gas is a little bit more significant. As you know, our gas department does have a significant expense annually that has directly associated with the old infrastructure and around that we are required by the Mural Commission to update and replace on an annual basis. So we have some of the water rate increase, it's $2.87 per household per month. Wastewater, 3.25%, that's a $1.55. Our gas is a little more significant at 12.5%, that's $5.92. And our wastewater is 3.1, I'm sorry, our solid waste is 3.5%. And that is for both residential and commercial. On the residential household, that's about 75 cents per month.
Questions or comments? Can you repeat the increase again for?
Okay. Our increases, water is a 2% increase, that's 87 cents a month. Our wastewater is 3.25%, that's a $1.55. Gas is 12.5% at $5.92. And our solid waste is a 3.5% increase, and for the residential total, that's about 75
Katie, is this maybe for Mike or maybe for Matthew? Is this going to, our water, is that not about 32 as well?
That does not include. We receive notifications. The end of December from the San Francisco Water District, and that, at that point in time is when we will come back to you if they push through a rate. And at that point, yes, it is direct pass-through. It does not, we don't do anything at that time for the city's purpose.
Okay. And then we, I understand the gases were found by regulatory corrections.
Yes, sir.
Wastewater, is that going to, is this maybe for, is this going to help with rehabbing the sewer line?
We do have some capital project funding in there specific to the wastewater treatment plant and some other projects. I can pull up right center right quick, and I can give you a little bit more detail as to specifics. Matthew, you're on, if you can do it faster, help me out.
Yeah, Katie, this is Matthew here. Yes. Don, may I yell at you? I can continue on as well. We do have the 2021 water treatment plant improvements listed with two funding sources, with that being some existing debt potentially, and that totals about 1.6 million between 22 and 23. We made the assumption that that project would take two years to complete. That was the question, I believe, about the plant, is that correct?
I know you had explained what the rate increases are. Can you maybe go specifically why we are asking for new rate increases, you know, just for budget-wise reasons? I know we had said not to do this last year, so now we're coming back here, knowing that this will come back to us. So can you maybe go a little bit in detail why?
The main purpose of the rate increase is to make sure that we cost recover. We want our revenues to equal our expenditures and we're not going upside down. And we are required to keep a debt ratio of 1.10%. We want to make sure we keep that in place. And as we've talked many a times, it's key for us to have our fund balance in place, which is 180 days' worth of operating. And for some reason, we, I'm sorry, six months' worth of operating capital. And for some reason, we have another hurricane, Harvey. We want to make sure that we can continue to operate until there's any federal funding available.
And what is our operating balance right now?
We are upside down, leave about 60 days on the utility funds. Yeah, yeah, thank you. So we ended September 30th of 2020 in the utility budget about 45 days upside down. So it's not near as significant as some of our other funds are, but we definitely want to make sure that we are able to cover ourselves in the event of any type of natural disasters.
Just one more question. So say we don't go through this today, how, do you know how much that would add on to that coverage?
To some...
How many did you know that? How far was it?
We reduce our revenues significantly if we do not push through, especially with gas. If we do not push through a rate increase for the gas, we may not be able to cover expenses, which would put us significantly going backwards. The other two, they, if we reduce personnel costs or another significant cost, which is maintenance, then we would be able to operate without going into a deficit. But anytime we reduce our revenues, we have to have a corresponding reduction in expenditures or expenses. And in this case, the personnel maintenance.
Can we talk about the revolving, like, 2018, 2019?
3.5%.
And how long is your contract?
We are in a five-year contract, one more year to go before we, I'm looking at Kevin, because we had this conversation on kind of, but I think this, we have this year and one more.
Right, a little more and about a year and a half.
So there's a 23, or 24?
And two years ago, they did not increase our solid waste rates on the commer, the residential, they only did the commercial side. So we did have to recreate them one year for our residents when it came to the solid waste. But we did increase last year 2.9% and this year they're asking for 3.5%.
And that's a CPI?
Yes, sir.
In the contract? I believe we did not have a water increase last year.
We did not increase water, wastewater, or gas last year.
Question or comment? Outside of the city limits, the increase is a little bit more. Is there, are they on the same wavelength as the city limits or they did their own? And then also, I guess our water, wastewater, gas is all we've got as well, as long as they have those services?
Correct. Some of our residents inside, outside the city limits do use for public services, but our franchising agreement with the Republic requires within the city limits to use for public.
So anybody outside the city limits contracts directly with whoever, the Republic or anybody else?
Because I don't get the benefit of the city, did he say?
Correct.
Correct. The, outside of the city limits, they contract with whoever they wished to contract with, and it may or may not be Republic services, and those, they're billed directly from that contractor, not from the city. So we do not have any control over their rates.
If there's no further comments, time is 6:26, and the public hearing is over.
7:26.
7:26, we're the same. I have number seven. Delivering the Act on First Division of the Orders permitting Art IV of City Rockport Swimming Orders, number 1027, by King, zoning the land located in 1906 Mallard Drive, also known as 0.153 acres of land, who may amount to lot number 38, lot number one, plus heresager subdivision, unit one, City of Rockport, Grand, County, Texas, Marlon, or single family quarter district, D1, general business district. Develop office and warehouse space, repealing all ordinances and conflict there, providing perceptibility and providing an effective data. I've got some people that would like to comment on this item.
Hi, my name is Travis Kelly, I'm the property owner there at 1906 Mallard. I'd just like to come and respectfully request that you resell the property. Some of the, my neighbors there have made some concerns now, and I respect those concerns, but it seems like with the planning and zoning committee, commission meeting and previous meetings, the concerns are more with the neighborhood, the bypass behind the neighborhood design, you know, they're not happy with the bypass being there and away from that or, you know, stuff like that. And I was also kind of confused by the staff recommendation to the planning and zoning committee that the lot was not conforming to the neighborhood, but I didn't really think it was conforming because in that neighborhood, at least acre subdivision, there's anywhere from mobile homes to vacant homes to new mobile homes, old mobile homes, new construction, old construction. And there's over 120 feet of front edge lawn, the bypass, which in my understanding is a, does made it a business corridor. So I think when you look at the lot itself and the location of the lot itself and the area of the path, I think on appearance of the lot itself, one of the comments by the planning and zoning, I think the staff recommendation as well as if the lot was too small, as I understand it from the, I don't know if you recall, but, you know, for the building, you know, commercial, you don't have that, commercial destination, there is no, made a lot size, as I understand it, there's even smaller lots. I mean, this was over 6,000 square feet, but you have room to do what I'm talking about there. If you look at it as a residential lot, I think it makes more sense of the commercial lot just, you know, than, you know, nobody wants to necessarily have their kids running out on the highway, you know, right there. So I mean, if you look at, well, is this a lot a commercial lot or is this a lot a business lot, you know? I mean, I can make my own, you know, conclusions on that, but that's kind of where I was at So if, so then, you look in the same neighborhood, there's, every road's going into that neighborhood there on 1069 and going in on Lays Road. Those lots on the end there are some commercial, there's store units on one, there's a vacant commercial lot there on the other. There's houses behind it that the city owns. You know, if you go south down the bypass, that big lake there, it goes from Sunset to the bypass, that's owned by the city, from what I saw, and it's some commercial. Five lots down south, you know, I think it's five lots, there's a commercial lot about the same size. And then right next to that, there's other commercial lots of long wedge, along, it is neighborhood, that city property there that had the commercial building there. And so, and there's, you know, so there's, I mean, to say that it was non-conforming to the neighborhood was kind of confusing to me. I don't know if there's any clarification on that statement that they made in the planning and zoning commission, but anyway, thanks, thanks for your time, thanks for the neighbors that are concerned.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Karen Lee Ricehead, 1915 Mallard Drive.
Did you push the button on the base there?
Karen Lee Ricehead, 1915 Mallard Drive. I lived across the street from the property that Mr. Kelly was referring to over 20 years, full-time. He may think it, I think his term that he used of planning and zoning was a mishmash of... of properties there. Regardless of that, these are our homes, and this is our neighborhood, I would have to look at this business across the street from me every single day. When I bought this property, I walked in a residential area specifically because that's where I wanted to live. I don't want to live by business, and regardless of what he says he intends to do with that business, if it's rezoned and to B one, he could put anything that would be allowed in B one. Nothing is committed him or any for future owner to what he says he intends to do with that lot right now. I, when I bought my property, I looked to see my property and the neighbors around me, what they could use that property for, and I should have some reasonable assurance that that can't be changed after the fact. Otherwise, no one, no matter where they live, would be protected in their home from having the property next door rezoned as a business. I believe that it would be in direct conflict with the purpose of Rockport zoning ordinance. It affects the general welfare of the residents nearby, it will increase noise, it increases traffic on the street, turning off the bad high bypass, the traffic is so fast there, they come around that corner taking out the entire intersection, and it would increase the hazard there. The care of the districts is his home, we're not by business. It would lower our monetary value of our homes. That is a series of lots that runs from a pinpoint near market to the widest point is fifty-five feet, you might have a hundred and twenty feet one direction, but from the access road, you have fifty-five feet, which puts you right next to the neighbor, and then those lots narrow down to the point south of Mallard. There's not enough room to have a business there. They would end up being a series of storage lots with a bunch of materials and machinery parked on them, which increases the hazard of vandalism and theft, which makes us vulnerable next to that. I'm asking you, please protect our home, and don't allow this to happen to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ricehead. Paul Beard.
I'm Paul Beard, I also live in nineteen fifteen Mallard Drive, Rockport, and I think, one meeting or another, we're going through all of this already once, so I'm not going to re-say everything. We do live in a residential neighborhood because we want to live in a residential neighborhood. Half the windows in our house and most of our yard would be looking at business, this guy, this would be almost directly across the street from us. Describing our neighborhood as a mishmash, according to the city plan, that will, that's by attrition is changing. Mobile homes will go away and things like that. Our neighborhood will get better if we follow the plan and win the city annexed it. And it doesn't matter if it ever gets better, we still don't want to live right across the street from a business, or we would have moved to a different part of town. And not wanting to be by the bypass, well, we do worry about the bypass originally, but the traffic going down the, or up that ramp is doing fifty to seventy-five miles an hour, skipping another driveway there, it's not going to help that, it's just going to get people killed. So what I'm asking the city to do, to thank the planning and zoning for the unanimity rejecting this, for, for a huge rejection, please protect the security and the value of the homeowners, the longstanding residents of Rockport, over the priorities of an out-of-town developer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Beard.
I'll compare this, this might, good evening, Mayor and Council. Before I speak on this item, I would like to make an introduction, if I do, I'd like to introduce Ms. Carrie Dietrich. Ms. Carrie Dietrich is the new Assistant Director of Building and Development and our Community Planner. She comes to us with many years of experience from the neighboring community, and she will be joining us on several occasions as we go through these types of things. Ms. Dietrich, welcome, Councilwoman Ms. Dietrich. Ms. Dietrich, Council.
Welcome. Before the word.
Having been told this item was heard in a joint public hearing between the City Council and P and Z on July the twenty-seventh, and then the P and Z met the following Monday on August the second, and the site was presented. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously is recommending to the council to deny this request for rezon. The staff concurs with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is currently not compatible with the surrounding usage, and the current future later use map, which is the two thousand and eight version, has indicated this area to be designated low density residential. And so we concur with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We'd be happy to try to answer any questions if you have to.
Councilman, any questions, Mr. Donald or anyone?
Make a motion that we go with the planning and zoning recommendations to deny the request.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Dietrich and I'm reading the second, Ms. Handel. Any further discussion? Call, call, word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Yeah, I believe I need a subway from the back, unless conflict, did a conflict, there's a, it is a word.
Yeah, that's second, sorry, any? Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you.
I'm sorry, but we could hear the motion or the vote, so.
The motion was to deny, and it was a four, four zero, one is the extension. Item number eight, delivering an act on first reading of the ordinance permitting Art four of the City of Rockport zoning ordinance, number ten twenty-seven, by changing the zoning of land located at fifteen oh two sixteen street, also known as lot fifty-three, block two fifty-one, Swartheimer subdivision, being ten point zero one four acres, City of Rockport, Aransas County, Texas, from R one, first single-family dwelling district, to R two M manufactured housing district, repealing all ordinances in conflict there, providing per seppability and providing an effective date. Mr. Donald.
This item was heard at a joint public hearing in the City Council on July the twenty-seventh, and then August the second, the Planning and Zoning Commission admitted, and this application was presented. I do see Mr. Solinsky in the audience tonight, and I know that he may want to come up and say a few things, but it was presented, the Planning and Zoning Commission was reviewed, there was lots of discussion, they did take a vote, they voted four to one, and the staff concurs with the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve this zoning request for Mr. Solinsky. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and I'm also asking Mr. Solinsky to come up and maybe give a brief outline of the presentation. I know that y'all were here for the joint public hearing, and understand that he is doing R two M manufactured housing district, and he is looking to build affordable housing within our community. So, Mr. Solinsky.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Les Solinsky, three nine three three, Loop seventeen eighty one, Rockport, Texas. You know, as we, in the first appearance in the joint meeting, the P and Z meeting, I think I had some pretty outlined facts about affordable housing, I also had some pictures. There's two homes in the City of Rockport, less than two thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars, there's seven in Aransas County, less than two hundred thousand dollars, and I had pictures of that, and it's, it's an outlier, and so we've all seen the shortage of, of people being before to live here, and I, I'm fully convinced that offering half-acre lots with mid-fund and all the infrastructure to bring across money, also minus seventeen half-acre lots, individual subject systems, city water from Monkey, and electricity from A E P, combined with a two-two or a three-two brand-new, brand-new electric home for a hundred and forty-four thousand, is going to be a sold-out show, and it's much easier.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
There was no changes to the original presentation.
Say that?
There was no changes.
No changes, I'm sorry, yeah, no changes. Mr. Solinsky, have you engaged either an engineer or a surveying company, or, not be that, I, I kind of learned, hold on, of course, I'm riding along, I'm performing, and getting things weird, I'm a little, I'd love to be dangerous on my development, so.
Mr. Solinsky, as you and I have talked about in the past, I fully support what you're doing, that is right around from my house, I'm good with that, I think that this is exactly what the community needs, low-density, affordable, or forced housing.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, Mr. Reddick, and the second, Mr. Dietrich. Any further discussion? Word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Aye.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you, Mayor, and Council. Thank you, Mr. Solinsky. Item number nine, delivering an act on awards of bids to sell property in Young Street, delivering an act of first reading of ordinance of City of Rockport, Texas, authorizing city management to sign appropriate deeds and other such closing documents, is required to sell lot five R, block one fifteen, Dode and Mathis Division, being zero point two eight seven acres, according to the replac recorded lot of seven, age one forty-nine, flat acres of Aransas County, Texas, also known as ten seventeen Young Street, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor and Council, this is the property you recall, kind of on the backside of Business Thirty-Five on the south end, we have a lift station on one corner, pull that up. We've carved out, carved out a corner on that northeast corner, and it's the remainder of that lot that we solicited bids for, we received four bids, the highest bid being thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars from David Hayes, who owns the two lots immediately south of there, and recommendation is to accept the high bid.
Council, any questions?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Dietrich, second to this text, any further discussion? Call, call, word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Aye.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you. Item ten, delivering an act on first reading of the ordinance permitting City of Rockport, Rockport, chapter one oh two, utilities, R two, water service, division three, service charges by amendment water rates for all customers, provided that the loading and set ordinance, for keeping all fireburns in conflict here, but providing for an effective date.
So these are the actual ordinances that the items followed down on the public hearing we got a few moments ago, this one is directly related to our water rates, it does provide for you the rate chart as to how the rates will actually be read now, specific to the two percent rate increase across the board for our water. We'd be happy to answer any specific questions.
Council, any questions?
So move.
I have a motion for Mr. Dietrich. I'll second it.
I think I'm just going to stick on this. Ten fifteen.
Oh, yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't read the, if you come to the podium
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, my name is Chrissy Rublidge, I live in fourteen eleven Data Drive since two thousand and five, and I wanted to talk about these rate increases. My household is a family of two, we don't work in Rockport, we're out of town most of the time, working, and I want to say, my water bill is consistently, or my city utility bill, higher than my electricity bill. I do have city gas, so I'm going to talk on that next. I listened real carefully to what our, Ms. Grif, had to say, and Councilman Hapman asked the question, and it didn't get answered, so I've got to ask you all right now, what is this two percent rate hike going for? It's not going to fund the water system or improvements in the water system, so let's be transparent in our budget. I've looked at every page of the budget, and increasingly, as I went through this budget, I'm very concerned, we are generating revenue through our city utilities and transferring that money out to other places, so where is it going? Is it going to fund your aid positions this year? Is it going to grow your government? Because the growth in government that's listed on your budget is forty-nine percent, and so I'm going to come back and talk about the budget, I'll come back and talk about the gas, I'll come back and talk about the wastewater, but every single account in here, especially when you talk about hitting us with rate increases, needs to come back to us and the council with complete transparency. Where are these rate increases being spent? Are they being spent to improve our infrastructure? Because you all have intent of exploding our population, I get it, I see it, you're exploding the growth of government, I get that, but you're also increasing our rates, and why are you increasing our rates? What are these rate increases going for? We need to take care of what we have already in place for the people who already live here, before we go ahead and call money, grow, grow the government, grow employees, put more people in the parks, buy the parks, and do all of these things. So I'd like to see a discussion tonight, so that everyone here can see, where is this rate increase of two percent going? What position does it fund? She asked specifically, how many extra days does this generate on the fund balance? And it's not, it's being transferred out, generally, in every single account where you're raising the rate, you're transferring the money out somewhere. So is it increasing the fund balance and then just getting taken out of the fund balance to pay for something else? Tell us where it's going, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reddick.
I will do my best to answer the question. I thought that I had answered, and I apologize if it wasn't a clear answer. It's difficult for me to say what a two percent rate change will do to the fund balance, there's a lot of volatile factors. What I can tell you is that there is no transfers that are not directly related to franchise fees or administrative costs. Administrative costs are those for the Human Resources Department, the Finance Department, and things of that sort. We do have a cost allocation process that we go through that directly allocates based on various factors, those factors include budget, the number of employees per department, the number of purchase orders written, the number of cash table checks, written things of that sort, that's how we do allocation, the number of, in the items. It's a very involved process that generally takes us a long period of time. As far as the franchise fees, it's six percent, six percent for every utility, including Republican Services. We also receive it from A E P, so it's nothing that we do not receive from other utilities. Those are the only in. Those are the only funding that is transferred from the utilities to the general fund. We do have included in the budget that directly does impact. The items that the rates impact include all operations, that's your personnel, your maintenance, your capital expenditures, your debt payments. Those are the things that are part of your budget. A rate increase gives us the ability to fund the budget as presented. It will not change the fund balance as it is on October first. What will change that is if we do not spend everything we have budgeted or if we, I happen to be lucky, if some were that we budgeted. When we budget, we budget extremely conservatively. We will budget revenues way lower than, in general fund generally, than we anticipate because we know that if we over-budget revenues, we will over-budget expenditures and return events such as COVID or Hurricane Harvey can totally de-rail that. And the last thing any department, especially Finance Department, will see is come back and say, we need a budget amendment because we have stuff. So we try to be extremely conservative when we come to you. And what we bring to you is what is heartfelt to the budget office. We do not make these numbers up. We work very diligently. We work with Matthew Garrett when it comes to our rate increases. One of the best well-known rate consultants within the country. I've worked with this organization in other cities much farther than we are. I have a lot of faith in their abilities. They look at our future. They don't just look at this year. When we do our rate increases, it's for a multi-year process. In twenty nineteen, we can do with a rate increase. In twenty twenty-two, we can do with a rate increase. In twenty twenty-one, we did not can do with a rate increase. Knowing that we had done our homework the two prior years so we could hopefully go through a year when our constituents, when our residents were more challenged so that we could help them by not doing that in a rate increase. When we come to you this year with the rate increase, it can be put off. And honestly, you can put that off. The problem is, if we do not fund today, we have to fund next year or the next year. And because we did not do a rate increase last year, we're looking at this year. We should have done an eight percent rate increase for natural gas last year because we have to do that. It's just we're looking at twelve and a half percent. Everything that we look at has gone up. Our, the cost for us to make water has gone up. The cost for us to treat the wastewater has gone up. The cost for us to buy the natural gas. All of these are luxury costs. The cost of, a gallon of milk has gone up. The cost of the eggs has gone up. We're looking at the same operating cost. On average, we talked to y'all about the CPI and the NCI. You know, that we're looking at a five percent increase minimum right now in the majority of the things that we have to provide. And that includes, you know, the cost of lumber, the cost of pipe. All of those go up. So can we not do a rate increase? Yes. Can we make the repairs that we're going to need to make if we don't do that rate increase? No. And what further will happen is, we will have to continue to use up our fund balance in order to make the repairs that are unexpected. And then what that results in is that that gap becomes greater and greater. And all we can do at that point is hope for no further future disasters.
And I will add that each one of these enterprise funds, water, gas, and sewer, those are regulated operations. And we get to that point where we're not keeping up with rate increases so we can fund the maintenance. Eventually, the state will step in and start fining. Then we have to come up with the money to pay the state for the fines. And then we also still have to come up with the money for the repairs. There's no way to get out of not paying for the operation.
Pardon me, which operation are we talking about?
Water, sewer, and gas.
Drainage?
We're on water right now.
Drainage?
You can fly for drainage?
Okay.
We're currently discussing the water, that's the agenda item. We cannot deviate from that agenda item at this point.
Well, the water, the two percent increase, is that increase going to infrastructure, maintenance operations, new taps, or all of the above?
Pretty much on the, so the way the rates work is, we put everything it takes to make the utility happen. So on the water side, it's the cost of materials, it's the cost of maintenance, it's our regulatory compliance, it's the cost of personnel, and the cost of future infrastructure. We play that out in a five-year plan. And over that five-year plan, the overall goal is, is to level out, build our fund balance to reach our hundred eighty days, and make sure that our revenues, costs recover all of our expenses for that end of that five-year term here. The water portion is in the best shape of our three utilities. It can be volatile, though. With all the rating we had, our water manager, assistant director will tell you, our sales are down. That makes sense because we haven't had to sell as much water. So that does impact it. But when we put our budgets together, we bring to you all the rate increase requests. It's so that we cost recover in our costs. Because the utility funds operate like a business or enterprise fund, they have to cost recover. So for us to do so, it's just like if you go to the grocery store, the cost of your groceries increase so that the grocery store makes ends meet and that the farmers don't starve. It's the same scenario for us. We have to make sure that we cost recover so that our utilities are self-sustained.
If SAMPAT comes back with a higher rate increase in December or April?
Late December.
Late December, will we have to come back and have a visit or is this covering?
We will come back and visit with you in the end of December, the beginning of January, if SAMPAT does so. There's been times where we have been fortunate enough that we covered it at the beginning when we came to you now. We do not have another two to five percent in there to cover the increase from SAMPAT. At this point, this is just for operations. Would that would be, would we just pass through if we need to come back?
We do not know until December what, any kind of increase that SAMPAT will give us. Sometimes they don't. And they're frequently passing on an increase from the City of Corpus Christi. There was one year where, I think it was only a nickel. We just ate that. We did not pass that on. Frequently, it's been fifteen, twenty, twenty-five cents, and that just gets passed on.
Thank you.
So the understanding is, sorry, so the understanding is, by keep seeking years of rate increases, that's going to have the font, the next year, and then the next year, as long as you keep saying. And then eventually you get the fines, and then that's going to level it up to all.
So the hope is, is that you cost recover the sooner the better. When we first looked at our rate increase, everything was a little bit higher. But then we sat down and discussed with Matthew Garrett and said, no, we really do not want to put a heavy rate increase on our residents. We need to try to soften it and to push it out another year. With the water, the water was probably the easiest one for us to look at because it is minimal. And being a resident of Rockport and on a single income, I understand the heartache and the frustration that it can reach our residents. But I also understand what it takes to get that water to the front door. And we had some huge costs this year that we are not being very successful in giving us help line during that winter freeze so that we could get water through our system and back out. And so we've been very fortunate that we had the ability to do so. But if we did not carry a significant balance or cost recover, we may not have been able to have worked through that as quickly as we could. Even though it seemed like it was forever, it really wasn't as bad as it could have been.
Okay, so we have, I'm going to turn to the Viera, and I second it. We'll call it. Word one?
Aye.
Word two?
Aye.
Word three?
Aye.
Word four?
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eleven, delivering an act on first reading for an ordinance amending City of Rockport, Corpus Christi, Chapter One Two Utilities, Article Two, Wastewater Service, Division Four, service charges by amending wastewater rates for all customers, providing for delivery of said ordinance, including all fire ordinance and common fare here, but providing for an effective date.
Good evening again. So I'm for you to, to afford. This is the wastewater portion. Similar scenario to what we just talked about with our water portion. It does cost us a little bit more, especially in infrastructure when it comes to the wastewater. And then the cost of treats, the residual water that comes back to us is a little bit more expensive. But we have done some upgrades. We do have some additional upgrades to do with the wastewater treatment plant. One of the things to keep in mind when it comes to wastewater is that we have to have a plant that can treat all of our residents, not just our permanent residents. So when we have the RV parks, the hotel school, there's a lot of that goes through that facility out there, and we have to make sure we treat that. Unfortunately, that does impact our rates. And so we're bringing to you tonight a three point two five percent rate increase for the wastewater that will help us with our fund balancing in. The water and wastewater do work together in the fund balance. This is about a dollar fifty-five cent increase for households. But it does allow us to cost recover in our wastewater portion of our funding, of the utility fund. Happy to answer any questions or if I've tripped up on myself, let me know, and I'll try to straighten myself back out.
Probably on the same line. So this one, Matt, and talk about, we have some debt service that's still used for improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. Does this increase, the three point two five, also going to assist in the improvements at the wastewater treatment?
We do have future capital improvements within the five-year plan. So we have some infrastructure additions as well as plans to the facility. I believe there's a force main that we're going to be adding, is that someone else? Our genius, that we plan to add and will provide additional capacity out of the plant.
Does this, does this assist in funding of our proposed personal?
Yes, sir, it does.
This is my personal thought. I'm sorry.
Yeah, just like our other budgets, it does, it is inclusive of the proposed positions as well as maintenance and capital costs and material costs in order to operate the systems.
And it appears we're attempting to agree employees to water the work.
One of those positions is already funded. It's been a vacant position for the last several months. And so that position, we had one retire, and we have repurposed an assistant director position into a wastewater treatment plant manager position. That's something that we have not had in Rockport that's pretty significant in order to properly operate the plant and stay with the regulatory compliance, TCEQ, and keeping the balance and all of the chemicals where they need to be out of the plant. Or out of the whole lot, just enough that it can be internal.
So that's more on it?
Yes, sir. The manager position is funded in the current year budget, and we just pushed it forward to the number that we had. It's a new position essentially. It's just the funding is in, was already part of the active budgets.
We had an assistant director of Corpus Christi retire, and that assistant wore many hats and managed the operations of the wastewater treatment plant. We brought on another assistant director who primarily focused on water distribution and the water department portion. So we repurposed the one assistant that retired. We repurposed his position and were going to hire a wastewater treatment plant manager, someone that comes in with the credentials and the licensing that can oversee the daily operation of the wastewater treatment plant to ensure compliance and work on future development of redundancy and capacity in the wastewater treatment plant.
This also helps to fund the addition of digesters and a third clarifier.
So it does add some redundancy to the plant?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Everything that we're doing out there, we want to have a redundant system. So we have two clarifiers, two digesters, you know, everything. The only thing that we would not duplicate is the anoxic basin. And that is the capacity to remove the nitrates from the waste. And it's a very efficient system that we have out there. And it lowers the nitrate rates within the wastewater discharge very well. And it will take the increased capacity that we're planning for the plant in the future. The plant right now is operating at about half of its rated capacity. The problem is, the infrastructure, a lot of the infrastructure out there is extremely old. The concrete is beginning to pit this fall. And those tanks and everything else need to be rebuilt. And so we're going to rebuild them one at a time. So we build a new, and we take the old one down, and then rebuild the old one. I have two new ones.
One more question on the manager, manager position out there. On that page, I'm going to do a new plot.
Yes. So trying to explain how to exactly, so even though it does show up as a new position, we defunded another position, and I believe we do show it with an offset. I may not have gotten that completely clear as we were putting these out. But after the vote, we want to show up. I do go back and go back through everything and revisit the notes and check our numbers. And that is, for this particular position, we did already have it funded.
It's already?
Yes, sir. So essentially, that's not added to the request. It was already funded. A portion of that was already in there. But that position was actually funded in water, wastewater, fleet, and streets. So we did pull the portion out of fleet and streets and water, and it's only now funded through the wastewater. So there was, so reallocation and say, it's a little bit of a confusing one because we did have that position spread over so many different responsibilities.
But you will get one more page, like on the, in, in the notes?
Yes, sir. Those two are absolutely brand new, do not exist.
Anyone else? So move.
I was going to talk on that, sir. I was going to talk on the waste, wastewater, water, wastewater.
And that's just confusing because you described some amount of change.
Every single item until fifteen, I'd like to talk on. Thank you.
I can't see it. Is that one?
Yeah, this is where.
Shall I, shall I come up?
Please.
Thank you. Council, Mayor, my name is Chrissy Rutledge. I live in fourteen-eleven Dana Drive. I want to talk about wastewater, water rate hike of three point two five percent. I'm really concerned about this. First of all, my water bill, my city utility bill, is over a hundred and forty dollars consistently, sometimes going up to a hundred and seventy dollars a month. Two people don't work in Rockport, not at home during the day. That's ridiculous. Second of all, where's this money going to? And are you really funding this maintenance that you're talking about? Because I've looked at your budget, and your maintenance for wastewater improvement system projects is zero. And lift stations, you've got a little money in there, so you're going to expand. You're going to expand your system probably to a new development. I understand that we've given a big tax amendment to the Pearl Point Apartments. So you paid to get those utilities from the wastewater system all the way out on Pearl, all the way out to the bypass. We did. Where is that money coming from? What about the maintenance in the water and wastewater system? I found twenty thousand dollars in the budget. This is consistent throughout the budget of a city manager who does not have our priorities in mind, which is caring for the maintenance of our infrastructure. But he's going to raise our prices and make that city government bigger. We have eight new employees of those. We have a We have a receptionist in the, uh, city utility apartment. We have three point seven million dollars of transfers coming out of our water wastewater fund. Is this 3.25% really necessary just to grow government? What is going on here? Be transparent, tell us where this money goes. I'm going to read it. Transfer to general fund, five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Transfer to general fund in lieu of taxes, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. Transfer to general fund site maintenance, twenty-three thousand dollars. Transfer to general fund administrative salaries, two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Transfer to utility district, come on, two point one million dollars. We don't need a utility district. We need someone who knows how to put the conservative budget together and live within their budget just like we have to. We don't get to go out and just raise our salaries under the board. We don't get to raise our rates. We've been underpowed here, we've been under stress. Stop raising our rates. Where is this money going to? Because it's not going into maintaining the system. Thank you.
Can we get a little venture? I guess, uh, where, where's the most working contractor come to?
So, um, just as I explained to you on the water item, so there are two transfers essentially that come into the general fund from utility fund. Those are the six percent franchise fees. Uh, we do receive one for water, one for wastewater and one for natural gas. It's six percent of the, the revenues, it's the same thing that we receive from ADP, from Republic Services, from Sprint or Spectrum, uh, it's six percent franchise fees. We do discuss that with you all at some point, uh, on that rate with that presenting for that. Uh, we do have a present that's associated with salaries and that is to cover the cost of the administrative staff, the finance staff, human resources staff, city secretary. Uh, that's based on the number of agenda items, the number of payroll checks, the number of employees, uh, number of purchase orders and things of that sort. We go through a very in-depth allocation process in order to calculate those and, um, that's part of the budget process. Um, the transfer for building, uh, sign maintenance has to do with the cost, uh, maintaining this facility. We do, out of the general fund, pay for janitorial and building maintenance and that's a portion which the, they reimburse the general fund for that specific, that specific budget. Uh, it reports, I believe the budget is building, uh, maintenance budget is number six three two, I believe. And, uh, that's where those expenses come from, it's almost a hundred percent janitorial, about ten percent. We will see the current costs associated with, uh, cleaning this facility, cleaning this room, services for, and things of that sort. Utilities and things.
And the two, two, two and a half million dollar transfer to the utility district, that's the pay for the water we get from?
Yes, I'm sorry, that's the cost.
Yeah, and if we don't pay that, they turn this figure down, so it's kind of a war.
So that's the cost of our water. Um, it's, you know, that's what it costs us to purchase the water. We do have to transport and drink that water and store that water. So, uh, there's a cost in addition to the actual cost of making purchase of the water.
The force main from twenty-one sixty-five to, to, uh, wastewater treatment plant was paid for by the Pearl Point Development. The lift station at Pearl Point Development was paid for by the developer. That cost was about three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand dollars and I want to say about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for them to put that force main. That doubled our capacity down, we lived there twenty-one sixty-five to, we lived to wastewater treatment plant. We increased the pipe from, uh, I want to say twenty-four inches to thirty-six inches or thirty-eight inches to increase the capacity solely to the wastewater treatment plant. That also allows future development in that area, uh, to be phased through the wandering hopes. There's a lot of dump into that same force main that was paid for by Pearl Point to go to the wastewater treatment plant. That, that money was paid for by the developers.
We, we also have water and sewer impact fees, so, uh, that goes into encumbered fund when we have to pay for expansion of the system or improvements of plant. That money comes, so it's not coming from the rate payers, it's coming from developers and developers.
We, we got a little impact on the system and that's what, what a term impact, you try to.
Each, each living unit, each living unit equivalent, LEU, living unit equivalent, LUE, is calculated and when you build a single family residence, depending on how many bedrooms you have, is calculated the living unit equivalents. If you build an apartment complex, then each bedroom of that apartment complex, each unit pays the LUEs and adds up and the developers pay that fee also. They're paying for their impact on our system.
And the LUE is a national engineering standard. It's not something that we calculate or our engineer comes up with, it's a national standard.
And all of that work that we do is actually reviewed part of the audit that we go through. One of the reasons that we won so many financial awards that we manage that so well, thank you for doing it.
One thing I do want to add is that there are no rate adjustments for Pearl Point or anyone else. Uh, all of our entities that are on the city sewer, water and gas, they pay the rate as presented and adopted in our ordinances, there are no rate adjustments specific to the new location.
I'm sorry, I want clarification, I have a quick. It is my, is my understanding and a lot of people's understanding that the city, uh, because of the lettering of the contract with Pearl Point had to take out a loan to, um, pay for the force main going out there or utilities going out there and y'all decided not to and y'all decided to pay for that yourselves. Is that, am I incorrect on that?
We did not fund that. That, that force main was paid for by the developer.
Did y'all plan to get anything going out to Pearl Point?
No, sir.
Okay.
Hold on a second. Question and call back is, second one. Can we have, can we have a question? Yes.
Who was the second?
Motion second, uh, that's right. We'll call, word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Aye.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, I, and you.
Mayor, just for clarification, who was the first and second, so I can get it from the min- Thank you.
Item number twelve, deliberate act on first reading of the ordinance and many city Rockport court, court ordinances, chapter one of the rules, art five, natural gas service, division three, service charged by emitting nat- natural gas rates for all customers, providing for the validity of said ordinances, repealing all prior orders in conflict herewith, providing for an effective date.
Good evening, one more time. So this is item number three of the utility rate increases. This is our natural gas rate increase. Unfortunately, this is the most significant rate increase. Uh, this is also the most demanding infrastructure and regulation, uh, compliance utility that we have. This is regulated by the railroad commission and we also deal with C and Q and every other industry that you could possibly think of like natural gas. Uh, we do have a section of our, um, gas, uh, infrastructure that is quite old and, uh, we are on a program to replace a percentage of that, uh, so many feet, uh, per fiscal year. That's part of this budget that you see, uh, presented to you. Uh, we also have some other, um, options that are included, other opportunities included in there as well. Uh, we do have the addition of one FTE that will allow us to more, um, efficiently operate and do some of the line replacements that we are required to do to pass rather than trying to contract all of that app. Uh, we do have approximately five hundred thousand budget on an annual basis for capital improvement. Uh, you'll see that included in the rate study so that we can, uh, properly, um, comply with the railroad commission and update our old, uh, steel pipe, is that correct? Steel pipe.
Yeah, we are under a regulatory order from the railroad commission to replace the steel pipe within our system and we have to have a plan in place showing the railroad commission that we're making progress on replacing so many feet of the steel pipe within our system each year and we're currently doing that. And we, we do have an older system, some portions of our system are older than others. Uh, we have steel pipe and in some cases we have a PVC pipe that is not even allowed by the railroad commission, uh, in some portions of the older part of Rockport where the line coming from the meter to the house was installed with PVC. And if we discover those pipes, we don't know where they're at until we have an issue with when we discover those pipes, they also have to be replaced.
And the, uh, the five-year capital project plan we have, we've got two point five three, uh, for natural gas projects, uh, that's the amount of capital, uh, what else? How much water we need out of this fund, I guess, to, to this, I can solve it, to this water fund balance?
It will over the five-year plan. Um, you have to take a bigger chance than we would have to with our other utilities. Uh, the natural gas does operate on its own fund, um, its own enterprise fund, so it must recover its costs. And unfortunately, uh, we've been kind of behind on building our fund balance for an extended period of time, uh, mostly due to the cost of us having to continually update and replace some of the old infrastructure. But, um, if we follow the presented, uh, rate schedule increases over the next five years, we will become completely cost recovering and, uh, be able to build our fund balance to where we need it to be.
And then is there, uh, do we have any debt money, uh, allocated to these?
I'm sorry?
Is there a debt, uh, debt service allocated to these?
Yes, sir. There is a debt service allocation portion. Um, we have portion for, uh, the AI, which is our meter program where we're switching out the meters on that and there is another, uh, piece where we have, um, done some replacements and some upgrades in the house and we are hanging off that debt.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, twelve point five percent is a pretty big hit. Christie Rutledge, fourteen eleven Dana Drive.
You're on white.
Fourteen eleven Dana Drive, Christie Rutledge. Twelve point five percent is a pretty big hit. Having trouble getting my head around this as I look at your budget, I look at every single line in the natural gas fund. Um, you know, we've been here for a long time, this system is in trouble and that it needs maintenance and that we have to upgrade these pipes because the TCEQ is asking for the compliance, but I don't see any money in here to do that. Um, you know, thirty thousand dollars in capital improvements, that's why I found in your natural gas fund. How much is in maintenance? What, where is this money, uh, going? This twelve point five percent, is it actually going to repair the system like we're required to do? You know, I, I really don't want to have a natural gas leak. I live around the corner from the, uh, gas station, uh, my high school. I don't want that. I want all of your older homes that have gas in the country flow and a shady side, up and down enterprise. I want them to have safe service. So tell me what this twelve point five percent is going to? Is it really going to do the capital improvements that are required? Are you, again, making money, putting it back into salaries so you can grow government? Forty-nine percent is the growth of government in Rockport under this current budget, but where is the money going into maintenance? I'm not hearing it. I don't see, I want to know how much is going into maintenance. I want to know what kind of projects we're scheduled to maintain. We've heard about drainage, we've heard about that hasn't been maintained. We're going to talk about that some more because we've got a serious budgeting problem. We're spending money on frivolous things and we're charging taxpayers more in rates, utility rates, more in tax rates, and what are we doing to maintain the systems that we have? We're trying to import visitors, eight hundred to a million visitors in here come upon us. That's fine, let them come and enjoy. I celebrate with their vacations, I do, I honestly do. But what I don't celebrate with is our systems being broken down and not being refunded with maintenance. And then you're going to charge us more and charge us more and charge us more and you never keep up with our systems. So tell me where the maintenance is to fix those pipes which you're required to fix because this is a serious problem. Natural gas is not something we want to mess around with. We just talked about water, wastewater, our system overflowed and you still have money back in there to repair it, you know? Come on, you guys need to make some sense and put our money back into our infrastructure and repair it. You're going to give us a twelve point five percent rate increase, fix the system. Thank you. And also, is this money going back into the C and G system to, uh, where is, where is the expenses that you're charging us? Is it going to salaries? Tell us where it's going. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Er. I do see, uh, under maintenance was imposed twenty-three point five percent increase, so same two sixty-seven three for, for natural gas lending finishers.
Yeah, there, there is an increase in our natural gas and that is to continue to make the repairs and upgrades that our system needs. We do have crews that are, um, out, you know, out there working all the time to make sure that we do not have leaks and that our citizens are safe and they do replace portions of pipe, um, as they come across it. And they also do have a, um, a plan in place, uh, that tells them which pipes that need to be repaired or replaced and they are working through that system. We do have included in this rate increase the ability for five hundred thousand dollars worth of the, um, specific line replacements, um, in addition to the regular maintenance.
I got, I was just, I was saying that, uh, in maintenance for that one, I do see an increase, uh, from last year, uh, so we are covering more funds to, to assist in the maintenance of replacement of.
Yes, sir, we are.
And those, the transfers, the operating transfers on that, is that line on? Is that?
It's, it's the same that we talked about with the other ones. We have the, the franchise fees and the cost for administration.
Okay. Thank you. Any last, Council? Salute. Second, I have a motion, Mr. Vito, second, Mr. Bernard. We'll call, word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Aye.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, I, thank you.
Thank you.
Item thirteen, deliberate act on first reading of the ordinance and many city of Rockport court ordinances, chapter eighty-two, solid waste, part of two, prejudice collection, section eight, three point three nine, be scheduled, city fees for service, repealing all prior notices in conflict herewith, providing publication and an effective date. Welcome back.
All right, I'll turn it again. So this is number four, uh, this is our, the fourth rate increase that I've been requesting you. Uh, this is our solid waste increase. It is a pass-through increase that we received, the request from Republic Services based on CBI at three point five percent, that is on residential and commercial. This, uh, we usually have to use up this time every year at the request through Republic Services. Like I mentioned to you earlier, two years ago, they did waive the residential increase. Last year we had a two point nine one percent and this year we bring to you a three point five percent increase. Uh, the, the positive to this is because it is a three point five increase on commercial, that means the franchise fees that we receive from Republic Services on commercial items also increases by three point five percent. You'll see a slight increase, um, general fund side to accommodate that as well. That does not hit the residential side, that does not change as far as franchise is involved on commercial.
Council, any, any more questions? Any questions for you?
Sure.
Salute. That's just on the fourth. You didn't sign on the third, you might miss that. Thank you. We have a motion, Mr. Vito. Second, Mr. Bernard. We'll call, word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Aye.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, I, thank you. Item fourteen, deliberate act on presentation of course fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Delivering an act on presentation of all fiscal year 2021 and 2022 budget. Before we get into this one, I just want to make a short point of information. We're required to run our balance budget on an annual basis. This budget is typically a general operating budget. We do not include major expenses in here. I know with all the discussion about range, our budget's 50-something million dollars. We're having, probably having to look at 20-plus million dollars to get a start on drainage. Probably would be something in the, look at issue bonds for that at some other time. So if you look at this budget, we don't have. And that's typically the way you capitalize on your budget is through bonds or loans. And that, not the same exactly as we're going to do, but we'll probably go to balance at some point.
For your drawing. Is there a capital improvement budget included in what was on the computer?
There are some things in there. Again, it's not large enough to cover.
Is there a separate capital improvement budget on the computer along? Or is it just woven into the juror part?
Included in the proposed budget at the very end, you will see the capital improvement budget as we have it at this time. That does not include any future bond or note discussions or purchases. It is specific to the funds that we do have currently available and the projects that are currently outlined. Any future projects that council will discuss and any type of future funding mechanisms that's discussed, we will adopt a capital project at that point in time.
What page was that on, Kathy?
Question. What question? So we have water systems. Can you cover the heat? Hello, everyone. John Heffron, 210, Champaign, New York. So we have water systems, and we got maintenance, and we increased that. We have gas, and we got maintenance and capital requirements, and we increased that. And we got wastewater, and we got maintenance and capital requirements there, and we increased that. And then we have government mandates that we have to meet and supply and everything else. We got drainage. There's no increase in drainage maintenance. $40,000 this year, the same as last year, the same as the year before, the same as the year before. There's no increase, and the entire city budget is going up. You've got to increase, at least on the maintenance side. You have to find money to increase drainage maintenance. That's the priority of the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rutledge, I think last.
Ms. Rutter?
It was one of them you had requested, correct? Okay.
Again, Kristi Rutledge, 1411 Dana Drive. I'm here to talk about this budget that proposes a 49% growth in spending for the city of Rockport. How much, how many people have you talked, heard about on drainage tonight? I'll get there. Cost of living increase for the employees, 5.4% across the board. Two-step pay increases, that's your average. Of course, we have an increase in medical expenses. You have money in this budget to take care of our maintenance. I'm going to point out a few of them. We've got $141,000 for human resources software. That's the first time, one-time outline for that, and $32,000 a year. I'm sorry, but y'all have 100 and less than 130 employees. That seems like something for a plant, a major operation with hundreds and hundreds of employees. I think if you have the budget there. You've got eight new employees. They total up to around $485,000. One of them is a receptionist. I'm not sure why we need a receptionist here. That should be something you already have with your utility billing folks that sit up front. So that doesn't make sense to me. You've got $20,000 for a canopy over the fitness system. You've got $30,000 for a canopy over the basketball court in Memorial Park. And you have $40,000 allocated for drainage maintenance, street and maintenance. You have two new parks employees, maintenance employees, one street and drainage maintenance employee. Get your priorities straight. Stop with these frivolous items. We've had past experiences where you've spent money on a sports complex. You're looking at adding 29 employees over the next five years. And you're going to have this sports complex that needs two to three employees and two new utility vehicles, but to have no money for drainage. And you tell us you got to go out for bonds to maintain the system? This is not our budget. This is representative of a city manager that does not care about the people who live here and maintaining our infrastructure. And this is wrong. It's got to stop. A lot of people suffer in this flood unnecessarily. Figure out how to take care of and maintain our system. Cut the budget. Cut those salary increases. Cut out this frivolous stuff that you have in here. I can find a million dollars real, real quick. And I don't think that it would cost that much money to clean out your ditches in Orange County and city of Rockport and make sure your residents are safe and that the next time your grant's hard, which it does here, they don't flood into their homes. They're elderly, they're not trapped in their homes. So y'all need to get your priorities straight. Start to hand out care of your existing residents before you grow your government. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to give you one quick break here. I do have another forum from Mr. Tom Renino at 183 here in Oaks. He's a non-speaker. He wants this read into the record. I generally support the recommendations in the proposed budget. However, I question whether everything there addresses the most pressing needs. After the recent meetings on the streets and drainage problems, it should be very obvious that those are among the most serious concerns for Rockport residents. I question whether those two areas are being given adequate attention. The breakdown showed 10.19 cents of each $100 of tax revenue dedicated to parks and recreation and 10.55 cents, $1.35, dedicated to streets, putting infrastructure needs essentially on par with playgrounds. It seems like highways might be used away from the most pressing needs in favor of nice-to-do things. For example, the budget adds two new employees to parks to handle mowing currently handled by streets and one new street. That will help, but it probably isn't enough. I realize the cost of the fact, however, the two million on this budget item could be canceled as offsets. $25,000 for a market street design value. $25,000 for a parade float. $50,000 combined with shade coverage over outside to this and basketball courts. Is there a reason why people who want to play and exercise outside can't do it in the sunshine during the full parts of the day? I really don't realize that those are one-time expenditures compared to salary employees, but they add it twice the annual salary proposed to each new employee. So the fund two-year to ease for one year or one eighteen or two years. There's no question this is going to take a lot of money to deal with the maintenance and drainage problems. And we only have several million dollars we need available to act by prior challenge. Those problems didn't occur at this one event. They are at least in part the result of years of putting off necessary action in favor of the nice-to-do projects. No doubt, I'm more knowledgeable to help identify many more budget items that could be reprogrammed to help address the issue. Mr. Ruth?
Andrea, I registered to talk on item 14. May I come forward?
You didn't mean I did.
I didn't register for citizens to be.
Oh, this is not a.
Budget works. We work. It's not a drainage item. It's a budget.
It's not a drainage item. It's a budget item.
It's a budget question, lady.
A budget question?
Yes, sir.
Sure.
I'm beginning, I'm battling on it, and I moved in 4 by 6 Augusta. I'm beginning this budget as much as I could in a very short period of time where we have elders in our family. Is there any reason why you cannot delay for one or two weeks the passage of this budget? We have not had the chance to look at the capital budget. I cannot believe that you would send us home again with nothing. Do you know what is happening? Do you have to pass it tonight? The government, when they go to impasses, it's like, this is the president. You're the Senate, and we're the House of Representatives. The House of Representatives is saying we have to give a little bit more look at what you're putting in the budget. It's like when we were asked when they were asked to pass the Affordable Care Act before they had even read the law. Can you wait? We're asking you to wait at least one council, senator, before you pass this budget. Let us take a better look at it. You take a better look at it. How many of you get ready from front to back? Okay. I'm still looking for that capital budget that we used to be able to see very straightforward.
And I, can I interrupt you? This is the presentation of the budget. There is no action tonight.
There is no action tonight?
There is no action tonight.
How, when do you propose to do the action?
Well, it says deliverate an act on the present. An act.
It's a act.
This is the presentation of the budget.
On the presentation, an act on the presentation.
But when do you propose to do the action?
It says August 24.
August 24 would typically would be the next.
Okay, so we still have time to add something to it?
Yes, ma'am. There's been no action on the budget.
This is just the proposed budget as prepared by staff and the city manager is.
Well, it just came so fast because last Monday.
This follows the same pattern it has followed for years, even when you were on council.
Now, we talk a little bit more time.
For the last decade, it's been like this. Including, for the last decade, it's been like this, including the last two, three years you were on.
I remember the last decade.
Okay.
So I just ask that you take a little bit more time and give us a little bit more time to look at it and talk to you, each of you.
Just can you have time?
Thank you. No action.
You're not going to approve the budget tonight?
No, sir.
What are you, excuse me, what are you acting on it? Just the fact that it's been presented to them and they've accepted the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. So point of order, what if they don't accept the presentation? What does that mean? That means they were accepted. And you have to come back and present them with another budget?
Incorporate whatever changes they want to make.
Okay. Does anyone have a question? But it says deliberate an act. We're going to have a public prayer. Okay.
Same process, folks.
Okay.
The very extended process. Same every year.
Required by the state. Andrea?
Do you want to take a break?
Yes.
Yes.
Time is 8:47. We're on recess for five minutes. The time is 8:57. We're back in session. Mr. Ruth?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. A couple, three things before we get started. First of all, I'm not going to go through the entire presentation that we did in workshop. That was an all-day fair, and I don't think we want to be here until tomorrow morning. But if there's anything in particular that you want me to highlight or you have questions about, please speak up, and we'll address it. The other thing is, a number of questions were presented during citizen comments, and I think people need to know that the budget is a complicated document. There frequently is not a direct line between a budget of revenue and a budget expenditure. And a lot of the different funds and expenditures have regulatory issues that govern them, and it's not readily apparent to a casual observer what those might be. So I understand that people don't see it upfront, don't get it, don't understand it because that's not what they do day in, day out like council does or staff does. That's why we always encourage, and the council encourages people to attend and participate in the budget workshop. Frequently, that's at least an entire day-long process. Sometimes it's even two days long, and that's where you get into the nitty-gritty. That's where you see where the lines are connected. And it's not as much of an enigma that it sometimes probably appears. But again, I'm going to go through these slides quickly. I'll stop at a couple of them to highlight them. But again, if you have any questions or you have something in particular you want me to highlight, please, please just speak up. One thing to make sure people are sharing is we pay a lot of attention to the municipal cost index. People have a good idea what CPI is, consumer price index, because they feel it. That's referenced a lot in the media. Social Security checks and a lot of other things are indexed to CPI. The MCI is a different basket of goods. That's things that local governments buy a lot of steel, a lot of petroleum products, a lot of things like that are in that basket of goods, whereas CPI includes bread, eggs, things like that. So you can see, this year especially, this is probably the biggest spread I've seen in a long time. The MCI this past year is almost 10%. 10% inflation for the stuff that we typically buy. CPI is 5.4%. That's a pretty big kick. You can see with the last 10 years, that's a pretty incredible increase. So we saw a lot of increases in the cost of goods and services that we use. We have no control over what the fuel distributor charges us for our gasoline and diesel. We have no control over what the water meter people charge us. I mean, we get hit with price increases just like everybody else does. I have several slides in here that look at the overall economic health of Ranace County. Generally speaking, we have done very well since Harvey, including this past year, even though we had the COVID pandemic. When you look at sales tax and HOT receipts. When you look at sales tax and H O T receipts, we have done relatively pretty well. It's probably due in large part because with the pandemic, people were, could not travel out of the country. Some cases, at certain points, couldn't even travel to another state, but they could come down here. So, that was helpful for us. They came down here and spent their money. Maybe not so good if they were coming from hot spots in the state and bringing COVID with them, but it did help us out. This is, I sent you an updated slide deck a couple of days ago. This is one of the slides that I had in there in the workshop. This is not the correct one. It's an old one. The big difference, I wanted to highlight here, is this is the average weekly wage according to employment. You can see our employment prior to Harvey, we took a big hit right here, this is Harvey. And we've, the main thing to look at is the overall trend. And right here, when the lockdown happened with COVID, they were starting to inch up, but we're still quite a ways down from where we were before Harvey. But our wages are way up. This is the highest average weekly wage we've ever had, so that's good. But as you know from eating in restaurants and going to our recon establishments, everybody is looking for work, for workers. We're still short on laborers. Residential water customers, again, the overall trend, this is five years here, the overall trend is going up every year. We're seeing that. We expect, we talked about in the workshop and in the budget message, the next three to four years in particular, we'll see probably the biggest increase in residential growth that we've ever seen in this community. But the overall trend, even before Harvey, has been very good, very positive. On the revenue side, some highlights, the tax rate. The last legislative session, you'll recall, they moved away from the old way of trying to calculate the tax rate. We went from the effective tax rate to, which was now changed to no new revenue rate. And they're both more or less the same thing. It's the rate that brings in the same amount of revenue. Difference is now, if you're a certain-sized community, if you go over that no-new-revenue rate one penny, then you have to get voter approval. Unless you are a certain-sized community, a small community like we are, then you can go up to $500,000 in additional revenue, which they call the de minimis rate, and you don't have to get voter approval. Previously, you could go up to 8% in additional revenue, not have to get voter approval. So, that was done away with the last session two years ago. What is in the proposed budget is the voter approval tax rate, which is a new term, a new calculation, and it's kind of the closest thing to the 8% rate from before. It's kind of the same thing. For us, that is actually about a 5.2% revenue increase. That's new money. That includes the new value that's been added to the tax goals. And you'll see a chart here later, that we've had continuing increase in new value to the rolls. So, that 5.2% isn't just new taxes because the rate went up. It is a lot of it, most of it, the biggest bulk of it, is because there's new, actually new construction, new value on rolls. Sales tax, again, we budget very conservatively, but sales tax, we're including a 10% increase. Hotel occupancy tax, 28, almost 29% increase. I know that looks really big, but the numbers on H O T are incredible this year. We could very well exceed our highest revenue year ever in H O T. So, we feel pretty confident in that number. Sanitation, we just talked about, 3.5% increase. Then utility rates, 2% on water, 3.25% on sewer, and 12.5% on gas. Community disaster loan, which is from Harvey, if you'll remember, was a $5 million, nicely a letter of credit with a below-interest rate, below-market interest rate, over Katie Rybette, or a little bit below 2%, I think is what it locked in at.
Like 1.9.
Yeah, 1. Yeah, 1.9 something. So, we didn't start paying interest on it until we started drawing, which was about two years ago. So, you can see, this year, we have in the budget about $1.4 million in C D L money. And that will leave us about $1.5 million for the final year draw, so that'll be the following budget year, the '22, '23 year, and that'll be the end of the five years. This is the history of nature P P A. This is the '14, '15 year, it was a high point, $1.16 million. This is through $871,000. That's through June, is that right, July?
July.
So, we have August, September, two months of summer left to add to this. And if we bring in the same amount as what we did for the last two months of last year, we will come in and ride around this $1.16 million. So, we're doing real well, with COVID mixed in there on top of it, so doing quite well. This is just a close-up of that. Net sales tax. The yellow line is the net of Roman 12-month total, and then the blue bar is monthly check. Again, looking at the overall trend over from '28, '11, all the way to current, the overall trend is up, and obviously, the Roman 12-month total is doing quite well. Now, this is doing just a projection, assuming a modest 2% inflation for the next, going after '20, '31 on the right-hand side. So, looking at $4.3 million, whereas right now, we're at $3.1. So, just under 3. This is our total assessed value. This is not taxable value. This is the value of everything other bugs before, any deductions or anything like that. See, here in '18, this is the impact of Harvey. Then the following year, we shoot up, and we're, very next year, we're just ahead of , or we're before Harvey, which was the highest year, and we've just continued to grow. So, it's been, it's very helpful. This is, I have one rate comparison chart that we do every year. This is the adopted rate. This is what we have this year, which is .421311. The rate that would bring in the same amount of revenue, not exactly, but it's as close as we can get, would be .3927. The voter approval rate, which is highlighted in green, this is the one that's in the budget, is .418, so it's just a smidge below the .42. But the de minimis rate, which is the maximum we can go up, because we're a small community, is .44. And there are just different scenarios to look at. The 8%, which is the maximum we could go to, and under the disaster tax rate, because we're still, could take advantage of that under Harvey, .43, and 4%, 5%, 6%. So, what's in the budget again is .418. But what people really, what it comes down to, what they're really interested in, of course, and they go down here, is what's going to have their pocket. If you look at the very bottom rows, here, bottom three rows, this is comparing the impact of that rate compared to what these three houses paid in the last year to write. So, the average market rate this year is $261,000. The average taxable rate is $248,000, and the median taxable is $202,000. And three of those, you're going to be paying anywhere from $3.5 to $4.5 less, assuming there's no change in the value compared to last year.
Is that appraised value?
It's the market value, the taxable value, and the median taxable value. And if we were to send you a bill every month for the average residential homestead, which is $248,000, the total annual cost for that is $1,040. But that was billed monthly, just under $87 a month. This is how that'd be parceled out across all departments. Of course, the biggest one is Public Safety, $34. And in most, fortunately for us, we have a very excellent volunteer fire department. And in Fulton, has a very good volunteer fire department. They work very good together. Meantime, there's a structured fire that both get paged out and they both go. If we had to have a paid fire department between the fire and the police, both of them alone would more than likely consume the entire head-on revenue. So, we wouldn't be looking at a much higher rate than 41 cents. So, just looking at what is the total cumulative tax rate for a city resident, if you're looking, you know, they're not only residents of Rockport, they're residents of Ransus County, they're in the school district, in the lab district. You can see if the total tax bill is $1 or $88. But the biggest one is school district, and that's more of a function of state school financing than anything else. Over the last 15, almost 20 years, state funding has gone from 2/3 state to 1/3 local, to now it's around 2/3 local and 1/3 state. Dollar-wise, that's a $248,000 house, that's almost $4,700 in taxes total. And you actually pay more, a little bit more in total county taxes than you do to city taxes. The next bunch of slides are the rate study. Extender highlights, cost of living increased 5.4%. Council's done CPI increases for many years. Merit raises, two-step average, which is what council's done again for many years. Our group medical is changing from still P M L, but the providers changed from United to Blue Cross Blue Shield. The increase is 2%, which is excellent. Medical trend is typically 10, 15%, and we've also had some lower utilization this past year, which is, no change in dental, just a smidge lower in vision and a little bit less in our T M R S. The biggest expense is personnel cost. And we talk about this every year. We are a service organization, service organization, you typically would see a 70, 75% expenditure on personnel cost. We are at, on the general fund side, we're at 50, 72% of personnel cost. And when you throw in all funds, we're somewhere, I think somewhere around 34% or 37% of personnel cost. We are way under where we typically would be at. You've heard me say it before, we are not lean, we're anorexic. So, when we are looking at this influx of people, right now, we have 1,345 single-unit and multifamily unit housing units in some stage of development right now inside the city limits, plus just in one big manufactured home subdivision in the E T J, that's 1,100 units. We've got nearly 2,500 housing units in development right now. That's a huge demand on our services. We can't do it with the current staff, and we've held off on personnel as long as we can, because that's the biggest expense any organization has, and we've tried to keep taxes and fees down, but we can't do that anymore without adding more people. So, we defunded the Assistant City Secretary's position, and, I mean, one way to look at it, we left that vacant so we could help fund the H R management. And this is for nine months, it's not a full year's work. This will be coming in January. You would typically see a full-time H R person, around one person for 100 employees. We're now looking at 130, I think it's 135, 137 employees. We've been skating by quite a while without having a full-time H R person. Finance, you remember the auditor made a point of saying we need additional personnel in finance. Katie, I don't have it right in front of me, but what was the standard?
A staff of seven for a $850 million revenue budget, so we're a little bit.
So, even with this additional person, that brings us to four, and we need to have seven. Parks, it's two, bringing on two people there and one in the street, and the reason for that is, it was mentioned a couple of times, this would be moving the right-of-way maintenance to parks. This is centralizing the mowing function into one place. So, we're making the bucket of work for the street department smaller and increasing the amount of labor available to them so they can concentrate on streets and drainage. Because when it comes time to mow the right-of-way, that's all they do for three or four weeks straight. They don't do anything else. In the meantime, all that other stuff stacks up. So, as soon as they get off mowing, then they have to jump on that. In the meantime, everything else throws up, and it's just a constant fire drill, except by doing. Except by doing this, we think we can even that out and they can concentrate, give them two full crews to kind of concentrate on nothing but streets and drainage. And water, this would be for receptionists out here in the front lobby of this building. With the huge volume of permits that come along with all this, the two folks that sit in that window there, under normal circumstances, it was okay. They could answer the phones, they could deal with people at the window. And as people would come in, either to see whoever, you know, they didn't have necessarily anything to do with permits, but they'd seen people in the building, or they had questions, or they were answering the phones and directing telephone traffic somewhere. It wasn't a big deal, but now with the development we have and the permits that are coming in, they can't handle that. They have to ignore the phones, or they have to ignore the person in front of them, or the people have to wait, or the people on the phone leave a message, or they just hang up. So we're getting complaints that people aren't getting served. So this person would be kind of like the traffic cop, would be able to handle the telephones, would be able to handle the walk-in traffic and direct them to where they need to be. The two folks in the front can serve the people getting permits, can serve the people dropping off plans, they can provide the customer service that they need, those customers need to have. The utility system, the wastewater system manager, the, I don't know if certainly we explained clear enough what we were doing there. We had a long-term employee who was the assistant public works director, retired. That, we took that position and had done away with it. We had taken, that freed up some money because that was a higher-paying position, a long-tenured person. Freed up a position, we reallocated those duties amongst other people and then created this one that absorbed a lot of that wastewater part of its duties and took some of that money. So it's kind of depends on how you look at it. We didn't retitle it, we kind of divvied it up and used some of the money to finance. And then we added another maintenance tech to wastewater and water. And then billing technician over utility billing. You'll see almost all of these are either six-month or nine-month positions, they won't start until January or April. This is going to be a good visual of how our staffing has been over a long period of time. We're taking a little bit of the job here, mostly in the general fund. I want to talk about this, and Mike made a very good observation last time. This is my engagement picture, which will be celebrated in thirty-one years here in three days. When we first got married, our weekly grocery bill was fifty dollars. Like I said, this is thirty-one years ago. And we'd go to Kruger or Apple Tree on Thursdays because that was triple Kipon Day, and we made it work, made a lot of ramen noodles. Still eat ramen noodles a couple times a month because I like it enough, a couple times a week as a head. This is, this is from three, four years, four, five years ago, pretty hard. As Mike noted, I'm eating better than I was back then. And my grocery bill is not fifty dollars a week, it is closer to probably a hundred and seventy-five dollars a week now. I also have two more humans to feed. There's also been thirty-seven years of inflation. So the fact that I'm not paying fifty dollars a week in groceries doesn't, and I'm paying a hundred and seventy-five a week now, so what, three hundred and seven percent, three hundred, fifty percent increase in my grocery bill, that doesn't mean I'm a bad budgeting person on my food. Because I've had changing circumstances, right? Some of them within my control, some of them not. So when you say that you pulled one metric out of the budget and use that as, you know, the one thing to look at, that's really deceiving because you can't do that, it's not within context. You look at the growth of Rockport government from fiscal year ten, eleven until the ones that's proposed for twenty-one, twenty-two, there has been a twelve point eight-three percent decrease in the general fund staffing. During that time period, been almost a twenty-five percent increase in the population. So when you look at that, you want to be able to look over time, make sure you're comparing apples to apples, so you can do that on a per one thousand population, it's twelve point eight-three percent decrease. Because we've sort of added people from two thousand and ten until was in the proposed budget. We've added staff, but you want to be able to compare apples to apples, so doing it by per one thousand population is the way to do it. And by doing that, it's almost a thirteen percent decrease in staffing. You see here, yes, in the last ten, the last eleven years, we've nearly increased the general fund spending by fifty percent. That is an accurate statement. In isolation, that sounds like, that's a bad thing. But look at it as a cost per capita, because you want to compare apples to apples. Okay? Well, now it's twenty, just a smidge over twenty percent. Okay, maybe that's not so bad, maybe it is. Well, over that time period, the MCI, municipal cost index, same eleven-year time period, it's gone up nearly twenty-six percent. Now, when you adjust for the MCI, because inflation makes a difference, right? My grocery bill's gone up three hundred and fifty percent, partially because I've added two humans to the family. I had some control over that, but I didn't have any control over what the cost of milk was, or the cost of bread. So when you factor in MCI over this time period, the budget, the growth of Rockport government has decreased almost four and a half percent. That is the truth of the growth of Rockport government. When you look at it within context, that is what it is, a contraction of Rockport government, not growth, a contraction. These are...
Excuse me, sorry to interrupt. Is the municipal cost index calculated with also cities that pay for fire and rescue? Or is that number adjusted for the fact that we don't pay for those things?
That is calculated by American City in Cali Magazine. It's an independent, it's a national index.
But that's counted with cities, cities are counted within that index of that fire?
No, no, that is a market basket.
It doesn't have anything to do with the services provided, but the cost of materials.
It's a mar-
And whether you have a fire department, a police department or not, you still have to buy materials. And the most cost driven materials are anything that has to do with oil or fuel.
Steel.
Steel.
It's a market basket of goods, just like CPI has bread and eggs and that kind of stuff. This is a separate basket, different materials in it. Was there anything in this list of department budget requests that you wanted to go over or highlight?
Yes. I feel like there are some items in there that we can pull off here and probably need to put into our name intonations and stuff. Just as they were stating, I mean, there's some things like, where is it, here? Like the market street corridor, that could, I think we, you know, just the shake structure of the basketball court, I mean, things like that, I think, as you know, these people coming out are really just really number one, and having that not in there, that budget not seen it there, having seen it somewhere else that we can, something that we can definitely win on, I think that's really important, we need to turn that around.
Some of that is hot funds.
Well, the hot funds is a trade school. The other ones are not.
I see some.
I think the market street corridor study is important because as we develop, it's important that, that's the main street coming into town. And it needs to be a uniform, uniformity to it. Look, as we have to add streetlights and things like that, we have to make those investments.
And I completely understand where you're coming from that point. It's not that I don't think it should ever be done, or it needs to be done in recent times, I just think with our needs that we are concerned with right now, especially the joint infrastructure, we need to really think about what money is going to be used in the best way right now. And I just, that's just my personal thinking about it.
Very well, we're going to increase by, we don't do some of the drainage. I understand that there's capital money that would go for the big projects, and that we'll probably have to worry about it, but our drainage budget hasn't increased in some years, forty thousand dollars. And I guess I'll refer to, to Dondo, she kind of, do we honestly think that with forty thousand dollars and six thousand supervisor, we can mainly earn our current drainage projects?
But let me interject, we're doing, right now, we have ten million dollars of drainage work as alphabet right now.
Correct, we're not making those existing.
And right now, we have one contractor out, working on the sinkholes that are, that's drainage-related. We are trying to find another contractor to work on, well, we have one contractor working on the ditches. We're looking for a contractor to work on the other part of it. Two of them have said they can't, they're not, they don't have the capacity to do it, they referred to somebody else. He doesn't, it's too small of a job for them, so we're expanding our scope. But if we have, when you fire somebody, we've got, how many, it's about three hundred thousand dollars worth of work?
Three hundred thousand dollars worth of work, around here. Three hundred thousand, and that's going to be contracted service. Correct. So if, in our, again, we're going to increase by, although we keep the forty thousand dollar in drainage. We won't see anybody up here again in the picture, you know, to y'all, but we're going to increase by, we don't put more money in that budget. Nobody thinks about maybe when it's a drought, but we've been through a wet season, so drainage is on everybody's mind. So forty thousand dollars and five guys in the industry to drainage. Is it, can we do, I understand city budgets, you know, sometimes every department, sometimes you give, sometimes you give. I think maybe we can, we can give district drainage this year, this time, more than one person. And try to find some more monies in there for those guys to make any investment. Because otherwise, we're going to get fined.
I do agree with you, and I would like to see an increase in our professional services budget within the street department to continue to hire the contractors. We don't have the capacity because of the lack of staffing and sometimes the equipment necessary to go out and do the types of drainage projects that need to be done. We can go out, we can, you know, clean the drainage ditches, blow the boxes out, those kinds of things. Those are the things we do internally. Externally, when we have things, like I said, right now, I've got a stack for about nine sinkholes that were created by the storm event, and the average cost is anywhere from ten thousand seven hundred and fifty to twelve thousand dollars, and that's for each sinkhole that's been created by that storm. I have here approximately thirty to forty-five work orders that are pending in the street department for potholes and block drainage canals and such. We can get out and take care of those types of things, but it's these things, the big ones, that we need more money in professional services to handle.
With increased staffing, you couldn't do it?
We couldn't do some of them, you know, we need some additional heavy equipment, you know, in some cases, you know, it gets a little bit more complicated when you start digging in depths of over about three to five feet, then you start having to do the shoring and everything.
Right, with that.
Correct, you know, so we're no longer looking into backhoe, we're looking at trencher and, you know, a rapper will go in and dig a deeper hole, excuse me. And it is more complicated, you know, there are more safety concerns and those types of things. We can do some of the small sinkholes and such. One other thing I want to point out, and we get criticized all the time, we went out and we dug the hole up and we filled it up with sand. Well, that's not necessarily correct. We go out, the first thing we have to do is we have to dig the hole to figure out how wide it is and how deep it is, and then try to identify what caused it. Then we have to determine what can be done to fix it. I'm looking at one here, and we had a collapse of a manhole, the casing on the manhole was collapsed, and that's what was causing the water to rush out and create the hole. So we fill the hole up with base material, that's rock and sand. We fill it up, we compact it down, and we have to let it settle. And then we have to go back and put more base material, sand and rock in it, and compact it down and let it settle. And then once we fix it, we have to go back and dig it up, we have to fix that manhole cover, make sure it's not going to leak out again and create another sinkhole. We let it settle, and then once it settles and we get it down to a level area, then we go back out if it's on a street with blacktop. But it's not just going out and filling up the hole with sand and leaving it, but that, you know, to the general public, what they see is someone going out there and putting what they think is sand and rock in a hole and just leaving it there, that's not fixing the problem. So, and it's very expensive, and it takes a lot of heavy equipment to do that work.
With the addition of the park employees to help offset the right-of-way mowing, if those were to go to, I guess, public or streets and drainage, if you will, that right-of-way mowing would not take twelve months out of your deal? Could those guys be, can they right-of-way mow four months, six months out of the deal, and then six months be back in the street and drainage?
It's weather dependent, you know, it's mowing season here just about here around, we've had multiple communications between the park supervisor and myself and the streets and drainage supervisor. We've been looking at the job duties and responsibilities, and, you know, we need to get back together and, I guess, finalize the discussion on how that's going to work, you know, if we, we've had a discussion, and what we've kind of decided internally is the parks and recs guy, they can do what we call the up-top work, the pretty work, and get out with zero-turn mowers and take care of some of the areas along the streets and things like that. We can continue to use our streets and drainage guys to do the dirty work, that's the slope ditches and everything, like some of the ladies weren't here complaining about, you know, earlier about not being able to because they don't have the equipment. But they need to get and be able to do that dirty work. While they're doing that dirty work, there's other things that they can identify, and that's block drainage canals and those types of things, and make a plan to go out and take care of those kinds of things once they're done with their mowing and everything. So it's still to be determined on how we can work together, and it doesn't matter whether the technicians are assigned in the street department or the parks department, as long as the job is getting done. And that's the main thing, to ensure that we are taking care of our streets and our drainage and our right-to-play, and, you know, number one, that we're protecting our citizens from flood, and number two, that our community looks good, you know, so it's life safety first, and then, you know, aesthetics, yes?
I, I would much rather take money out of CDL and bump up contracted services than add full-time staff at this point because you're adding a recurring expense.
Correct, but we've had in public works in two thousand and ten, we have ten guys, and parks leaders, we have ten. Now we have eight in public order and, uh, public work, and we'll have fifteen in parks. So, risk for dozen, tax for dozen, good dozen, and then they are beautiful. Uh, but I think our streets and drainage guys could use a little help. Now, just, not, not, but with contracted services. But if, if we take those two guys that we're going to give rid, uh, parks, parts, and give those to street and drainage, and then next year, we agree with the, you know, parks, and it's a give and take. We gotta get onto the maintenance of the drainage, whether it's mowing or digging or blowing out.
And that function will be done.
It can't be done with five guys, he's got, I mean, there is.
There's, there's about thirty here right now.
Okay, so we're behind, so the guy, the guy, we're setting the guys up for failure, is what I'm saying, if you got six guys out there and one supervisor, and we haven't increased our budget, and we haven't given them anything else in, since twenty, well, twenty twelve, they lost three guys. So, the same, we're setting the guys up for failure, and we're setting up citizens are going to be crucifying us if we don't help mow the ditches. Maybe, uh, they got some culverts, whatever we can do, but if, if he's got that many work tickets sitting on the desk, they're, they're, they're just picking the, the fire, which one's the biggest issue right now, and I can do that today. But the other thing, you want to sit there and wait.
And, and we're, we're making the work, amount of work, and they have to do less and giving them more people.
We're giving two people to parks.
We give two people to parks to mow, right?
So that, so that they can take that mowing portion of their job, take them that over. And this, this happens in public works all the time, if there's a job to be done, they all pitch in, no matter what the department is.
So, we're going to put forty thousand dollars in by guys. I find that a good.
I'll always ask for more money, you know, and, and like I said, if you, if we're able to fund our drainage needs, whether we increase taxes, whether we increase the drainage fee, however we do it, you create a fund, we can get the work done.
And as a, having, and the budget message, there needs to be a much greater extended discussion on drainage and how we're going to fund.
Sure, but we don't have anything in our capital footprint projects listed in our drainage, because we don't have the money in current debt, that's going to have to go to the balance of the bond. Like in our work budget, our drainage workshop, the city in New Year's said, y'all haven't done anything in ten years, we gotta start somewhere.
Which is not true, we've, we've done several million dollars worth.
Okay, but, and we got some coming, but we haven't kept up with the maintenance. I'm not talking capital projects, but the big drainage projects, I'm taking, taking care of existing infrastructure, what we can, with not raising taxes and not raising, uh, you know, million dollars, that's going to have to go to the citizens of root. But something that we can find in our budget, move left to right, right to left, up down, whatever we can do, to get those guys a little bit more money for maintenance and operations of drainage.
There has to be somewhere.
What I mean, what I'm going to say is I'm more about giving them more money, it's like I said, more money, but my thought is, like I said, in the workshop, was, because those issues started in twenty eighteen, right? So if we're going to put more money into this, this project or whatever we're doing, I think we need to, it needs to start with the south side, not the north side. Because like I said, in workshop was, my forty-three years of existence, the south side will always flood. So for us to go to the north side and start fixing their problem that started in twenty eighteen, it, it, it's not right, it's not, it should start on the south side. So if we're going to do some money, we're going to do money with our team, we need to do where the problem has always occurred, not where it happened in twenty eighteen.
The technical project, you follow the same there with some maintenance operations, but it's not, that's not completely different, the whole drainage project, and we've got to put five million dollars in there.
But there's also drainage and mowing and all that other stuff as well, in the south side.
Oh, exactly, I mean, uh, so with these two, you know, two big projects, the Ruby Allen and Trailers Street ditch, you know, the Ruby Allen and Trailers Street ditch, that should only get quite a bit of setup, because not all the houses, but it only gave some of it. I just think that, I think streets and drainage and public works have to be a little bit more helping than we're giving them right now.
Boy, Ruby, Ruby Allen. Trailer are not going to help anything self-pull straight. I will tell you all that right now, because everyone's a rabbit and they go back. South of Twelve Street needs attention. We have been flooding for I don't know how long now, because the culverts are too small, there is no ditch, uh, there's too much of a ditch. All the patterns have changed since Harvey. Uh, I don't know how many people actually drove all the way down to like Portia, but there were some places that were this deep, and guess what? That was only with two inches of rain, it gets this deep, south of Twelve. I know Jimmy, money's got to go south side, because worst type of flood than in Detroit.
There, there are many issues that have to be considered when we talk about drainage in particular. You know, the south side, some of the areas, you know, down around Frees and Portion and those types of things. We went out there two years ago and we, we dug the ditches. The problem is, is when they were annexed in, the streets were built to county standards, and the ditches are this wide. And in order for us to, to increase the width of those ditches, we went and knocked on doors to ask citizens about giving up a portion of their land to increase the rights and weights and the width of the street to dig those ditches. And we didn't get a favorable response. We went out and did what we could with what we happened to work with, but you're right, if we're going to do something, we need to do it correctly, you know, and when we prioritize, you know, it doesn't matter whether it's on the south side, the north side, the east side, or west side, when we prioritize, we have to look at life safety first. How many homes are or have been impacted by waters in the past, and what is the potential? And then we eat the elephant one bite at a time. The, the most important thing is identifying a funding source, to create a funding source. And the engineer said, you know, we have had projects in the past, we have not issued debt in many years, we are at a point where we can start looking at issuing debt, and that's when we come to the taxpayers for the bond or whatever, uh, to determine if we can create a funding source. And then we have to find the projects and prioritize the projects that we collectively, that's we collectively, the citizens and the council. And staff determine what projects are we going to do.
And, and we did with master drainage plan, we looked at the historical data to prioritize based on life safety, property, and convenience. So we're really talking about two different things, one is maintenance, the other are capital projects. Talking about maintenance, I, I think we need to look at taking money out of CDL and adding it to contracted services.
Something, oh, I'm sorry.
To, to add additional staff now without looking at increasing the tax rate. A recurring expense is going to be difficult on this year. In the meantime, we can have that workshop or two, or probably three, to look at how are we going to fund drainage on, in the long term? Because we've never had that discussion, we've had, you know, an in-depth discussion about it, we've talked about, um, drainage fee, drainage utility, and we've danced around the bush, but we've never really had that, that long-term talk about it. And that's what we.
Drainage plan projects should be taken care of in my opinion, with bond money, that, that should be something that, that goes out to, because that's a big number. That's not something we can, we can deal with in, in our, in our annual tax. So we can't get there of maintenance in our afterwards. If, if we find a funding source somewhere in our budget, uh, I don't want to rock here to pay fall, but there, there, there could be some, you know, a dollar here, dollar there, it would be a huge, a big number than that. But to allow those guys the opportunity to maintain our existing drainage, and if that means, you know, and, and with the CDL, if someone has contracted services, again, correct, one guy in parks, or two guys in parks, and one guy in streets and drainage. I, my opinion, we'd give us streets and drainage, if, if parks, parks, if they're borrowing to go mow, then they go mow. But, but day in, day out, they should be there helping with streets and drainage, because that's where we're very efficient right now.
Yes, very efficient.
And, you know, I know we partner with the county on our streets projects, our tipso, uh, and we, we're behind on that as well. As far as the, the amount of miles per year that we're getting, and we missed a couple of years, uh, where did that money go? Can we use that, say, because it wasn't here, but they already got used, can we use that to help the drainage, again? We're going to be able to find if all we do is put forty thousand dollars into maintenance drainage, or drainage drainage, sorry.
Do we really need to have a, so maybe a joint workshop with the county and see what we could possibly do together?
Well, you bring in my budget message, I, I actually suggest it's a storm water committee. That's because that's, that's already there, that's a, that's a vehicle for it, all the entities are there, that's where the discussion probably should be. But we need to have a discussion amongst ourselves before that.
Well, we're about to crucify, and, again, we don't have a lot of money in there for maintaining these drainage.
We, we are seeing parts of the budget that we can move into that, that's what we need to do right now. It's, I'm not thinking, I, I think there's things that we can take out, and we can move it to what we need to put in to help that in the future, and what we need to give that to our citizens. I mean, that's just how I'm seeing it.
Hundred thousand dollars out of CDL into contracted services, is that?
That's a number, I, I don't have.
Well, it's a, it's a good number.
Yeah, I don't.
Let me just. Yeah, I've got, excuse me, I've got about. Seventy-eight thousand dollars right here, and I'm going to quickly go through these. Uh, this was for eleven thousand five hundred twenty-five dollars, South local last street across from the lift station, which was the top section of existing brick manhole, and to fill in the hole. Here's one for eleven thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars, repair a service line that was perforated and it, and a manhole blowout. Here's one, excavate around an existing manhole for a depth of six to seven foot, eleven thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars. Uh, expletory, expletory digging eight to nine foot in depth to determine the cost of sinkhole and make repairs required to install the shoring and, uh, well pointing and cement stabilization, twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Digging six to seven foot in depth to, to figure out the cost of the, the sinkhole, repair, stabilize, backfill, ten thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Install bypass assembly to include, uh, four by four couplings, pipe wrenches and everything, to fix a cracked four inch force main, fifteen thousand three hundred eighty-five dollars. Uh, utility improvements located in Church and Bay Street in the city of Rockport, remove and replace eight inch VCP made and replace it with eight inch plastic pipe, uh, forty-seven thousand fifty dollars. Utility improvements, uh, hard rope circle, repair a service line, nine thousand six hundred seventy-five dollars. And right now, these are bits, these are already accepted bits from a contractor that is working on each one of these projects in our city right now.
Grandpa.
We are currently funding that out of the streets budget, we do have items in there that we did not incur during the fiscal year, I believe we have some seal coating and some crack sealing, I'm not sure the exact terminology we have there, but that funding has been reallocated to take care of these drainage related items.
That work out larger.
They're going out of the current operating budget.
When we went through the, the budget as it stands today, we're sitting at August the tenth, uh, fiscal year end, September, and we looked at the budget, the current monies and the budget monies that we haven't spent, and we were allocating those monies to these projects, those are the externals. And then, as I said, I've got about thirty internals, where we've got our crews that are going out, we've got three guys out mowing right now, taking care of the mowing, and we've got another three guys that are taking care of potholes and block drainage canals and such. So they're going through the city and going through these work orders as they come in and going to try to take care of all those things internally at this point. And we just got notified, uh, we will start the seal coating probably in the next two weeks, working with the Razzas County. And, uh, have the location and the street locations, if anybody's interested, I'll catch you later on and tell you where we're going to be seal coating in the next couple of weeks.
Mr. Donahue, do you believe that you could hit all of the ditches at Rockport every year with the maintenance plan with the, with the crew that you presently have? If that's all they did was clean ditches?
I'd have to run that question by my streets and drainage supervisor, I'm not familiar enough with our system like he is to be able to tell you a yes or no. I would hope that we could, if we had a dedicated group doing that, and that was their primary function. I think that we could, but I can't give you a definitive answer, because he knows the system a lot better than I do.
We don't have a dedicated group for that right now?
They are not dedicated strictly to just drainage, they do multiple things, they take care of, you know, the potholes, they take care of the tree trimming, you know, and they've got the mowing, the rights and waves, so it's, it's a six-person group that splits to do all those things, and they also do facility maintenance and other things.
So, if, I'm sorry, I apologize, but do you have like a, like A streets, B streets, and C streets, and A street, A ditches, B ditches, and C ditches that say we have to maintain these every year, every two years, every, does that sort of plan exist?
They do have a plan, and they do have the, a system that they go by, they, they know where the trouble points are, and they know where they have to go on a regular basis. We look at things, you know, the big ditch in Whistler's Cove, you know, that's, that's an annual thing, and we have to plan it, you know, of course, the weather dictates when we can get in and out of there and such. And there are other places where they know they need to go visit them on an annual basis, they have, they do have a plan like that, yes.
Do you have any, you have, sorry, last question, I promise, is there any plan in the future to increase the number of people significantly to reach two thousand ten, two thousand twelve kind of ratio numbers? And like, are we going to see like an extension in the next five, ten years, two people each year added, one person, this and that?
We, we have submitted a plan like that, yes, to increase our staffing as of years ago, yes.
That's it, thank you for your patience.
I see it in twenty twenty-three, that streets and drainage, just two guys propose the next fiscal year. I mean, again, that's what I'm saying, you know, we took parks guys, two guys this year, proposed streets and drainage, and we give parks to those two guys next year. I mean, the parks department's been phenomenal with what they have right now, streets and drainage should use some help.
And that's what it sounds like to me, is that the streets stay and stays more, people warm it, you know, four feet of gravity, these other stuff, so, we're here to protect.
First, I think we should, the money should go to contract, con, contractual services and add that, you were saying, I would save one of a hundred and twenty thousand, that'd be, it'd probably be cheaper to contract it out by using our person, our bodies to do it personally.
Our, our local contractors are about to be done, they're, we're going to have to go our own body, there, there's a lot of projects that are, are on the books for them, and I know.
We are currently experiencing that, we have, well, really, there's, well, I consider three local contractors that do their work, and what I call heavy construction work. And the two contractors that do the heavy construction work, they're, they're, they don't need any work, they are overloaded. And, you know, when we talk to them about some specific issues, they said, we're not interested, we, we're not going to bid it. And we, we found one recently, a local contractor, that can do what I call the dirt work, they can go out and dig the ditches, and I've got, uh, I think eleven, eleven, eleven areas where they're going out right now and digging ditches, and they're, they're under contract. And we are now looking within the region to see if we can find anyone else that's, that's willing to come to Rockport and do some work, but, you know. But, you know, we're, we're looking in the Portland, Greco area and stuff. And it's the same contractors, it's the same folks.
How much is that equipment for that has the?
Oh, lots of money.
That, you know.
That's probably five hundred thousand, six hundred, seven, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, depending on what you get and how big it is. And then you got to be an experienced operator and all the kinds of things to be up to maintenance and all the things along with that. So there, there, there are costs associated with it. Like driving it over that.
Worse for, for, for that means, for a long range repair or whatever, it's just regular.
Right.
And you can take the dirt and dispose of it. I'm not talking about digging the big ditches, I'm talking about, you know, our regular, our regular, right? That, that, our regular, regular ditches.
Right.
That, that could use some cleaning up. And then as far as the south side, I think that's gonna take more than just regular maintenance. That's gonna be something we look at in the drainage plan because it's gonna take a lot of money to take that.
And you're exactly right. And I think, you know, we did, I think in two thousand, I can't remember what it was. We did a revision or a modeling of the drainage master plan. And, you know, we, we're fortunate that we have those, those projects that are being funded by a grant. Everyone knows that we can, and solely on grant funding to take care of our drainage issues. But, you know, once, once we get those done, that'd be a big first step. And continuing on with the necessary things for the, the remaining projects in the drainage master plan and then adding other projects, you know. And along with that, in south side in particular, in other areas where it's just fresh damage and everything, there's gonna be right away acquisitions that's gonna have to be gotten to be able to go out and do the necessary things and make it work. You know, so there's, there's all kinds of tentacles. I will say that we have worked very well in the Ranses County. They have been very, very good to us over the last, since marketing, we've all worked together. We continue to work together, uh, continue to be working with the Silco program. Uh, our street drainage supervisor is over at County Road and Bridge, meets two, three times a week, working with their supervisor over there, ensuring that we're supporting one another and complementing one another. When we're out digging in certain areas, part of that connects to what they do. So they come out and dig in the same areas to ensure the water pollution doesn't, you know, hit blockages. If we go out and do something and it gets reported as blocked because it's in the county, it doesn't help things. So we have worked with them and they have been extremely helpful with us.
And Mike, when we, uh, there was a reduction of the works when we went to the automated metering system. Most people were way worse.
That, that is true. When we went, when we first started the A M I program, we had, we'd said that we would not lose technicians when, when we went fully to the automated meter reading system. And over a period of time, when we lost a technician, we would not rehire that technician in anticipation of not having to have, you know, we have, uh, how many meter routes getting thirteen? I think, something like that, we have like thirteen. Seventeen or eighteen meter routes. And so we had to have enough technicians to read all the meters every month. And that didn't mean that we had eighteen technicians because we had some technicians that read two or three routes. But, you know, we needed that number of technicians and they did, they had plenty of due responsibilities. But every month for a week and a half, they read meters. And now we're transitioning to a fully automated system. We don't need, or we did not need that many technicians. So as technicians left for whatever reason, we weren't hiring those positions. And now we're to the point where we're needing those positions back.
Fair enough. I just, again, I'm saying again, reiterate, I don't think we have large enough to maintain our existing ditches. And I don't think the current stack is enough. I don't think, I think we're setting you over budget and I don't like seeing that to, to anyone who I don't know.
That's, that's where the C D L would come in. What we have left, we have left, uh.
Like a million and a half. One of the things I like to, that they're out there is you can fund the temporary positions in order to catch up and get established and allow time in order to obtain the appraisal value so that we can have significant staffing and add it within the future years. Uh, because that's not a permanent position, it wouldn't have a permanent effect. Also, uh, you can incre, you can hire contract services. You can put a significant amount into contract services to allow you to do that. Um, and pay for temporary seasonal workers out of that or paid out of personnel. This is kind of another option that you might look at.
Those, those options, like it, our contractor services, trying to find the contractors can be hard. Uh, the, the growth in south actors right now, our techs really, trying to find contractors that we can hit bits to is gonna be difficult. The, again, we have, next year, we're proposing to hire two guys for public works and, uh, I guess, this whole manager. But if we just forego parks this year, give them next year, propose to give them next year, and I think, I think drainage needs to help, that's all. And I guess I'm, I'll get off my soapbox.
But here, what you're saying is actually, you're right, we need to put more money in there. There's two ways to look at it. We can move monies around if we've got budget, or we can take the money from C D L that's not there because it can be used for that purpose, for operation. And we take care of the problem until we get people in the area to do contracted services. That'll be how that comes.
C D L maybe for personal costs?
No.
Again, the only thing that it can only use for is capital. So its maintenance, whether we use it for contract services or personnel, we can use the C D L. The, the challenge with that is, is that it does expire after next year. So anything that we add in the permanent section, such as F T E, then we would have to find a way to.
Fund it.
Fund it next year.
Correct.
But it, it will cover personnel costs and that's why I wanted you to know there is an option to be a temporary seasonal or a temporary contract. And you can, you can even do a shorter term position, but that's just an option that you can put out there. And also, if it is a temporary position, that reduces the benefit cost by about twenty-three percent for that employee. So you could actually get two temporary positions instead of one for nearly the same cost. The challenge that we run into with F T Es hiring people is the same thing everyone else in town has.
The labor pool.
The, the labor pool is a huge challenge.
And we ask, we say, this is a park, okay, and you're probably over here for months, they're probably not anything around.
And you just, we do, your, your park services, where you send it up in there and then you have people that just don't work.
So if our employees that, that do sit around, we, we pay them a nice salary and benefits and then we go on.
A huge percentage of our temporary employees that we have hired in public works and parks are now permanent employees. So it gives them a layup and opportunities like a temporary job interview. And most of the time, matter of fact, one of them may as well have a supervisor. So it's definitely a way for them to get in with this thing.
Rick, I, I'm sorry, I'm trying to take your guys from you. I mean, is this a viable option for, for the parks department to, to wait here to get your, your two guys?
Well, as Mike mentioned and the city manager mentioned earlier, uh, adding those positions for parks, we, we weren't just gonna be out, uh, mowing parks more frequently. The idea of, on, on getting those two employees was to help the street department and mowing all the flat areas, assisting with, uh, curb gutter as well when we're out there. We have the smaller equipment that, uh, that we can keep up, that kind of stuff, they don't. Uh, so you're looking at equipment, uh, that they would need, uh, to take that on. With the new sidewalk going on, South Lockport is another area where there's currently, uh, before the street where we'll be able to mow that and keep going, it's not, it don't be like that anymore. They have sidewalks that can be maintained and, uh, stuff like that. So it's gonna require more work. So and that's requiring two more employees, basically doesn't have to create a route to keep up with all the stuff that they have not been able to get to. So, uh, it's not just the parks work, it's a lot of street work too.
You, you can, we have a little budget, forty thousand, eighty thousand dollars, tell me, to get all the work done that you can get out of the C D L. I mean, there's more money there for drainage. Reinforcement. Should it's handled correctly, it's, uh, it's a grant.
But it expires next year, so. But we'll, we'll basically use your, we, we're so need to use it. I understand that part. But we have the plan and I'm looking for forty thousand dollars, but it'll cost you years for drainage. It's a viable plan moving forward, especially if we have more capital for good projects coming down the road. I think we need to give public works the opportunity to be successful and give them a little bit more money and give them a little bit more manpower, uh, to maintain. And I'm not talking about, you know, why I'm leaving it, I'm talking about existing stuff that we have that has shown in the last two years, since Harvey, you know, we've had some, some deficiencies in our drainage. And I'm not, this, this last year was a, was a water valve ringer flood event. So we can't really plan with those, we can't, effectively, we can't effectively plan with those. But if we were able to maintain some of the existing, the project we have, maybe some things would have been, had, had to work. And that's, that's all, that's all I'm asking. And we can't have that so long.
So, are you done?
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
Having been a technician for about a thousand years, most important part of the job was preventive. Preventive, preventive, preventive maintenance. Um, and if you don't do the preventive maintenance, it doesn't matter what you do after that because it's not the work. So, two things. One, poor planning, oh, it's poor performance, notice I left one out. And what's the plan? I've been walking around here for two months, going, what's the plan? Someone tell me what's the path forward? And if this doesn't define why we need that, a complete path forward on everything, I don't know what does.
Which, we have a master engine plan, we have.
We can follow that before you?
All right. First one, twenty-one. Two thousand eight, that was before me.
The last drainage, what, twenty fifteen, or twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen?
Twenty-six.
How many of those projects, we, we've got four projects that are.
We got four and I think there were eleven projects totaling about thirteen million dollars. And we, I think the, the, the first drainage master plan was developed, I want to say in two thousand, then they don't open on that. And then we did the modeling in twenty sixteen. And that was to go back and revise and add to and.
And it was adopted in the spring of seventeen. And then, of course, Harvey came in the fall or the end of summer.
Well, we're, we're just not catching up with other projects, but the master engine plan, we're just not catching up with other stuff.
I, I agree. We did, we did have a drainage master plan. The city has been vital to drainage basis and working with the Ranses County to ensure that those major things need to be addressed. And we're blessed with the grant funding that is available to not only the city rockport, but Ranses County to get most of those drainage master plan projects completed. We still have a ways to go. We do have a plan internally for streets and drainage and maintenance that we use on an annual basis to go out and maintain our drainage canals and such. Unfortunately, we have not been able to keep up. And we have been inundated with these rain events over the last two to three years. From twenty seventeen on, we have really gotten some really bad rain events. And so we do have some sedimentation. Uh, again, like I said, you know, when you go back and you look at when things were done and when they were built, when the culvers were put in the ground, when we anticipated the type of growth on this peninsula, some of the culvers are undersized, some of them have shifted, they've broken, you know, so there's multiple things that need to be done to the system. You know, we, we went out and, you know, using the, the Captain's Bay folks as examples on what needs to be done on their area. We could go out there and dig up all of those culvers, increase the size and put them back in there and take care of their drainage problem. You know, that, that's one way of handling it. The country club, you know, there are areas of the country club going out and dredging all of those ponds, increasing the depth, cleaning out all the cattails, increasing the size of the culvers and clearing, increasing the size of the drain boxes. All those things, they can all be done, but they cost a lot of money.
So I'm just, we're trying to get the means here for a little bit of this stuff, but it's pretty fast. We know what we need to be doing here. Right now, we have a budget. There's money that we can do, that we can give, and even personnel, we have to, to your department to help get some of these things done now. That is the point to think what we're trying to all need here. Uh, so we need to figure out if we wanna, you know, either have this brought back to us with that money towards, you know, more money for you or for a goal with the C D L, I guess, is what we're discussing now. Because I mean, this is, this has to be decided. So, I mean, you know what you need. We know that you need, we just need to figure out what to do here.
And again, I, I'll speak up and say, money from the C D L put into contractual services is gonna get us more bang for our buck right now. But the needed maintenance on the existing drainage system, just to be able to go out and mow and clean and do the things that are, you know, needed to be done on a regular basis, that, that is the additional personnel that are needed.
But you're only getting one?
How many additional personnel?
Getting one, parks is getting two.
I'd like to have a crew of at least nine within the street department.
Let's do it.
You know, but I mean, I don't expect us to eat the elephant in one body. But, you know, to effectively go out and do everything that they do on an annual basis, that's what, that's what we're anticipating.
Yeah, well, one of the things, part of the discussions we need to have in about drainage, and this is the long workshop discussion, is if we do have a, decide to have a drainage utility or a drainage fee, personnel can be paid out of that. But that's part of the, we, we can't have that kind of in-depth discussion.
And I understand.
At ten thirty tonight.
But we can, right now, what we're saying is, I understand you're saying that two's gonna go help them. But they're gonna be able to do just the size of the mowing of the, of the grass. And they're gonna be able to help them do other things and help get their project done that needs to be done right now, is my concern.
But the, the mowing, the mowing that needs to be done.
Yes.
Is almost a twelve month function. Okay? So these two, two people will be mowing basically twelve months out of the year.
How much is that, how much drainage, how much, how far back are we with drainage? So how many, if it has twelve months of your deal right now, is just trying to catch up on our existing.
So you have the two additional that you're talking about, but then, curriculum alone, the additional people you can use from the C D L that you can bring in.
Well, I think.
If you can give the high.
Yeah. Finally, so I think, I think maybe we get part of one and, and sort of.
I, I think we've got one in this year and two next year. You guys work together and you've only got two this year and none next year.
But, and the other thing is by, by concentrating the, all the mowing into one department in parks because they, they do a bunch of mowing, that's kind of a lot of what they do. He can flex his other staff. So in the heavy mowing times, he can use some of those other parks folks to, to mow the right away if it gets that bad, right?
That's, that's, that's correct, sir. Um, and again, what we were looking at, and parks taking on some responsibility was not just the mowing, but again, for curb gutter maintenance. We will be able to assist and do a better job than is currently happening because again, they don't have the personnel or the equipment, which we do. So working out the schedule with extra personnel, I think our town will look better. It'd be litter pickup is a big one. Uh, that gets mowed sometimes, it doesn't get picked up. So again, we'd be investing time. But it has been proven, look at our town.
Like, like what you did, you guys did a couple of weeks ago on Enterprise.
That's, that's exactly right. We, we, we took some time in the morning and we cleaned part of the Enterprise, uh, from thirty, business thirty-five to Pearl Street. We picked up all the sediment, uh, grass, everything was picked up. We scraped some, uh, friendly herbicide. Uh, and we are gonna do the following site hopefully later this week or first part of next week, hopefully before school starts. But again, those are the kinds of things that come with, with, with that kind of maintenance. Just not just mowing, but again, helping the street department and, and making things look nicer and keeping that sediment, keep from washing it into the drainage inlets and causing a problem down, downstream, so.
Anything's out of the wallet, anything.
Absolutely, absolutely.
What if we got to be mowing with a, a big truck?
We, we'd be mowing with our, with our scabs. A lot of the areas that don't look very good to get mowed with brushouts currently. We also have brushouts there, but we got some smaller ones that might be, might be able to use it again. We have the capability of, of working up, I think, a more aggressive schedule to maintain that and make it look as nice as our parks do. And, and to help from those, those, those drainage, drainage inlets from, from the clogged, we can assist with that. Uh, there's, there's a lot of work to just mow the grass.
Absolutely. I missed the point, they're, they're telling you what you need. They're telling us what we need, what we need.
The CEO's different, so it goes way down here. So with our contractual services, it gives the case contractual service a million dollars. You know, that goes way down here.
Two, two years.
The, the contractual services can take care of some of the big issues, some of the big drainage issues, some of the broken culvers, the collapsed pipes, and those kinds of things that need major attention. Once those get fixed, then the maintenance and then the ability to go out and take care of those on an annual basis is going to be easier for us. But right now, like I said, we've got major areas of our drainage system. The country club can tell you all day long about their broken pipes within their system and everything that need to be fixed. And once, once the pipes are fixed and everything else, the ability to maintain, keep the drains open, keep the ponds clean and all those kinds of things, all those things could be done with that CDL money. Get all that taken care of, and then come up with a plan, the maintenance schedule, to ensure that we take care of those things moving forward.
So, I just, one question, but they were mentioning that. Get all this stuff fixed, you know, every money, get all this stuff fixed. It's forty thousand dollars in a cover, but keep that maintenance after you get all fixed.
Once, excuse me, once we get everything fixed, then yes, we are gonna need an increase in our annual budget for, for drainage maintenance. Just forty thousand dollars is not gonna do it. Forty thousand dollars is, does not maintain our drainage system.
But we're using your money. Give you what you need from the CEO, but then I also, I would, I would love to see an increase in your drainage budget and your personnel for street drainage. That's, I would love to see that, and I'd like to see that in our budget meeting.
One of the things I want to point out is that whether the, the FTEs that you're considering shifting between parks and our streets and drainage, they're still paid for by the general fund. So it's gonna be the same funding source, and they can be reallocated based upon that. When you adopt the budget, you adopt the number of FTEs per fund. So kind of keep that in mind as you go through the budget process, that the... Not to get kind of on it to a point that you're gonna stall the process, just know that it's gonna be funded the same way, and that you can reallocate once that budget is adopted, where it needs to go. And that's what we do on an annual operating budget basis anyways. But don't, don't let it, let the paper fool you that you're not gonna put the resources where they're needed.
A part of one day is paid the same dollars as the street set, one?
That's correct. Yeah, all of our maintenance maintenance one positions are on the same pay grade scale. So we have a pay scale that's based on multiple grades. And within those grades, you have different levels of employees. And entry-level positions within all of our maintenance are at the same level. They do have the opportunity to obtain different certifications, for example, CDEs, I'm sorry, CDLs or VETR or something of that sort, where they receive certification pay. But then there's additional levels where they do that, and there's kind of equipment operators, crew leaders, and things of that sort. But we have a basic structure in all of our general services, public works type positions.
I would, I would like to see the streets and drainage get a little more help this year.
Do y'all feel like y'all are being self-aware? Because I mean, I know that's, I understand what he's saying. And if you feel, if you feel that way, you know, we, we need to know.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm, I feel Kevin's might, you know, I'm not begging for more work in my department, I have money. But again, because I have the equipment, uh, it would make it easier to maintain what, what was how, what I was asked to, I could maintain. I, I feel the rock will be able to superintend and take a look at it. And if there's a lot, not be done, uh, there's a lot we need to make a little better. Again, I'm not, not, you know, if you decide to, to take those two positions that are just in the parks right now, if the streets, I'm, I'm okay with that. The only issue with that is that maintenance, uh, equipment, you're gonna have to, uh, it'll be a little harder for them to, to, to run that operation when they don't have the right equipment to do it with. So it'll become an extra need for them.
What, what would you ask me for that, you think? Uh, the extra equipment that, that they may need, what do you think that would be? What would that be?
Well, I think, there are three more people in my department I'm, I'm sure you're gonna need an extra, extra vehicle, uh, mowers, a little trailer, uh, things like that. I'd probably say you're, you're probably gonna have to look at maybe another seventy-five hundred thousand dollar equipment needs.
Please.
Why isn't that a shared, I mean, why, why? It is small town like this, you know, it's just small. Why isn't that a shared and not owning it? And Park isn't owning it and maintaining it?
I can, I can answer that. So, you know, I, I, we've got seven turf tuckers mowers. I would have seven turf tuckers mowers running all the time. They're quickly running hard. They break down, again, because I've got the ability to know my schedule, know what my needs are, I can schedule, run, put it down. So, you know, I, I don't have two more, it might call me more important since, I think, two mowers. I, I may say I don't have...
That's a scheduling issue. So I mean, that's usually, you work out from a maintenance perspective. I think, and Captain Kane, one of the more vocal in your ETJ, um, former council member in another town. Y'all have got to get rid of the extra baggage that you have in this budget and give back to the rest. And the other stuff that Andrea and, yeah, um, y'all talked about, no one has come back and said, yes, I agree, get rid of the extra. And let's get back to the business, to do what you need to do. This is my perspective. And you have issues and you're not dealing with it on the way to the job. Could I have cut that as part, do I put a twenty-five thousand dollar float out there? Figure it out, come back and tell us what you need, get our phones to run this city. And I mean, I, right now, I'm not paying taxes here, but I definitely will, because you are in it, you know, you in it. I mean, I want y'all to do your job, and I don't want you as, as staff members and department heads to be strangled because you can't ask what you need and doesn't really, for instance, what it takes to keep our citizens today safe and, um, also. Why, why am I saying that? I mean, you, you're spending way too much time worrying about the world. Like, figure it out more together as a team, and use your resources together. I don't get it.
So the big issue here is, again, drainage. Mike mentioned, you were number out there earlier, you know, he thinks we need nine people to do what he's gotta do. I disagree with him, because there's, there's a lot of work there to do. Again, so if, if, if I don't get those two positions in order of my feelings, you put them on the street department, and they take on the full responsibility, I've got plenty of work to do.
There you go. Can I circle back to what you started a long time ago, when we started the conversation was? Andrea brought out, or Captain Kane brought some things that we could maybe do without, like shitting down with the shade, maybe there's an extra person. Sometimes do we need another receptionist, worse, should we need a street person worse? You can make it another year with receptions they have, and throw the, throw that salary at the streets department. How fun is that? If, if you throw, if you buy twenty-five thousand on traffic for parade, and then you tell me, say, we don't have money, any borrow money, the fund has been spent off. If you throw, if you get down to the shade and turn it on a float, and don't come to me and say, we gotta get the borrow money? There's things that we can redline in these budgets that aren't necessary. And, and we can take those monies, which is why I think that area was starting in the Mark Street, and put them to where the guys are needing, you know, the stuff that we need, the citizens we take care of.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, we spent a lot of time working on this budget plan. See, and staff got together, there was meeting, that's what we need, and our mental, our mental needs. So all this has been worked out, but what would be the best bank for the budget?
You know, we, we had this discussion internally. As I stated before, Kevin brought this idea into us prior to the budget workshop. We discussed it internally, administration drainage supervisor meeting, Rick and I met with his superintendent of parks. And the four of us sat and talked and determined that we could work this out together, working together, and we, we have a plan. We're going to meet with the city manager and go over our recommendations on how we think this can work for both departments with the personnel that are allocated. And as we've said before, it doesn't matter where they're allocated, they're still maintenance technicians, they're maintenance technician one until they get, you know, further education, training on heavy equipment or whatever. And we will come up with a plan to make this work. Uh, Ryan Barazi, our street drainage superintendent, Rick Martinez, went out and they came up with a plan that says the parks will do the flash spaces, the places that have been a little, we call it the holiday route. And they go to the city and prepare for Fourth of July and Memorial Day, those types of things. Our streets and drainage crews can still go out on the heavy tractors and go into the large drainage ditches where they're slow and they're, you know, they're dangerous sometimes. They know that work, they've been doing it for years, they can continue to do that. The parks guys can do the other thing, they can take care of the sidewalks in South Rockport that have been created. We have a plan in place.
Basically, staff recommendation was...
And as Katie pointed out, street department, parks department, all, are both general fund. So if we do a trial run and it doesn't work out, move them back into, to streets. It doesn't change the budget, it's just paperwork thing.
The budget is, is what it is, I actually see that with the personnel from number forty-four presenting. Street and drainage guys, they know. And whether it be contractual, uh, CDL money or what we, we want...
If, if we take... They're taking that mowing, mowing obligation from him, it's going to go.
If, if we take, give them CDL money for contractual services. In the meantime, we have those workshops and talk about drainage and how we're going to address this long term, that gives us the breathing room to do that.
Doesn't maintain it, what we have.
Another idea is, is, is kind of the opportunity to be successful in the current maintenance of existing ditches. Uh, and we, we, whether it be CDL money for, there's always a few ditches that are structured, pipes are manhole, and then we, uh, we go out to the census for bond of the major, the extension project. The things we will never be able to find at the moment. So, and that's, that's how city, you know, we're not allowed, unfortunately, I said that. Uh, we have a bunch of, and I just want to commend G. Stevens for being a hero today. He had an answering thing in the budget, so he's looking, he's looking real good.
Don't let him...
Personally, personally, he's, he's looking good today. But, um, but I, I just, I just think public work should be useful.
I just think there's a little bit more that needs to be taken out of here and have positioned for it.
I know a couple hours ago, when Andrea first brought it up, it was a couple hours ago now, um, the question was, is what do you want to take out? And so we went into a two-hour dissertation on drainage. So if we circle back to that, okay, not second circle back, but just circle back to it. The idea that Andrea threw out was, do we really need to put shade on the fitness court and basketball court at this time? That was the original question. And, so I'm gonna answer that, and I'm gonna say, um, I don't go out in the middle of the day in a hundred and ninety degree heat playing basketball. I mean, I, I, I don't wanna say that's subforce, but it is not necessary today. I mean, that's what we started with, was what's all this and can we get rid of it? The Mark Street corridor design guy, yes, that has to be done, it doesn't have to be done today. I mean, just looking at this, I mean, there's, there's things, and we haven't even gotten into line items of the budgets yet, and the three hundred percent increase in postage, that's for some reason the city needs, I haven't picked it out right now yet. But, um, I think we should get back to what we're here for.
This is not action item, right? It's an action item. I think it's something that we need to table, we need to look at, too.
Thank you, you're, you're right.
Where we're at right now, I think we need to table this.
Kevin, your recommendation, as a director of minds, we're not asking you to accept the budget or to do anything except let us provide it to you as we are required to do by our charter. So we're just handing you the proposed budget as Kevin and staff has prepared. We are not asking you to vote on this budget, we are not asking you to take any action on it except to say thank you, we'll review it, and then we have future dates scheduled for us to come back and have these conversations.
The, the action is formalizing the, the next step.
Correct.
So changes can still be made or just accepting a proposal?
Okay, thank you for clarifying. And really, probably what would be most beneficial coming to me from you all is kind of like an email I got from Mr. Jackson earlier, that, hey, what is this and what does this mean? And, you know, then we can get into the weeds and discuss it when we're all a lot more fresh and, um, have been able to answer you with a little bit of research rather than based off of what's in our heads and our memories.
I mean, machine gun, yeah, but, uh...
Except you, I'm here, I've got a question, it's not good.
I think mainly wouldn't, I think they want to see more people trained. So, streets part, I mean, streets. So, I think the best thing is, you know, to go back to the staff and see what y'all need, again, to look at, like, the shade and redline whatever the opposite not to do. Because I think what the problem is also is, when we start doing this, this is what happens every single year, and this is what, especially when it comes to bodies. We start pushing it and pushing it and pushing it to the side. That's what happened with our HR person. The HR person, we've been moving it to the side every year, and now we're at the point where we need this HR person. So we, we, we can't just constantly keep passing the bug. But, I mean, I understand, drainage, drainage is our number one deal. So to make everybody happy here, please go back, go hit your, see what you've redlined out. And I'm sure they're gonna look at it as well, and then bring it back.
Well, we, we need a, we just can't say go redline it. We need a goal, because Mike said we need nine people. Okay, well, nine people, that's salary, equipment and all that. You're, you're looking at six, seven hundred thousand dollars. Do you want us, you want us to go figure out six, seven hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, yes, yes.
I can do it real quick.
A total of nine, correct? A total of nine, or you need nine additional?
Total nine. And, and again, like I said, I'm not asking for nine people in this fiscal year. I'm not asking for those people. What I'm saying is, as we look at the future and what we're going towards, that is our goal to get there, to have a crew of nine to ten people, where we can send them out on two different jobs. When they go out, there's so many things that have to be done. Anytime we're out in the street working, we have to have safety flaggers, you know, we have to have the equipment parked strategically, you know, to block traffic and those types of things. And, you know, all those things are labor intensive. And, and right now, like I said, it's mowing season. I can put five guys in the tractor eight hours a day for the next six weeks and never have to think about anything else, they can just go out and make and mow. The problem is the things that aren't being done while they're out there mowing. And if I can have three guys out there mowing, and another three or four guys go in and fix some potholes, go and clean it out, drainage culvers and things like that, we can better keep up.
Mike, what you're saying is not working, you need more people now. What you're doing today is not working. We need, you need more resources now, as much as you need. Is this where it's... I'm sorry. So it's worth it, really, Mike. I, I, again, I'd like to give, uh, some more, some more people. Uh, he's only asking for one, that gets a day, so if we give him three, that gets him to nine. And that gives him the opportunity to do, uh, I think, what he's asking us to have to, for some guys to go mow on the tractor, and some guys to go do maintenance.
Don't forget to go back and look at what our requests are. And, you know, right now, it's one this year, two next year, two a year after. You know, so we continue to grow our staff as, as our need to grow.
But our need for staff...
But our need for today. Correct, and we, we need, we need stuff today. The other thing I would like to mention is, you know, y'all started making suggestions about what you think should come out, we need to see that too, from y'all.
Yeah.
Email us.
Send, send it to me, please.
So... You make a motion just to accept the proposal?
What, what I, I think you must right now, the action would be to, uh, accept the presentation?
Accept the presentation.
Well, if, if they come out with some changes, uh, maybe an additional presentation or, uh, next meeting, or what is really this, for y'all?
You, we have a budget on all the upcoming account, uh, council meetings.
Regular, regular council meetings.
And we can do additional workshop if you feel the need to do so. Y'all just need to share that with me so that, um, Kevin will can coordinate.
So I guess the budget needs to be to accept the presentations, uh, or have another presentation. That would all need to do.
I need you to accept the present, the budget as presented, um, taking no additional action. And what we will do is, we will schedule, um, schedule each of our additional council meetings. We actually, and we have public hearing scheduled as well, um, that's something else about to come up. And then, um, we do have the opportunity, if you feel that we need to establish an additional budget workshop, we can do that on a Tuesday, uh, either that we do not have a meeting or we can do it during the day. You guys, um, we'll call you, I think that Kimberly will call you and find out what works best.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the budget as presented, uh, no other action, and we will present changes to staff. Uh, sorry, to Kevin, the city manager, have, I think, I'll get, I'd like to make a motion to accept the budget as presented, and, uh, we present changes to city manager.
Your motion taken, and a second for the speaker. Word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Aye.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you. And I appreciate all the input from, from our local citizens. Thank you so much. Hold the break in that and taking record vote for post twenty twenty-one added law and property tax for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, uh, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two budget and schedule dates for two required public hearings on proposed tax rate.
Only one public hearing.
One public hearing. And before, before we get to that, did you know what's happening, Mr. Hubbard?
Yes, I did.
About three hours ago, I think Mr. Hubbard asked me a question about the force lane along twenty-one sixty-five. He asked me if the developer paid for that force lane. The developer paid for the force lane that was necessary for their project. However, I remembered the city did pay to upgrade the, the size of that pipe to increase the capacity. So the, the contractor paid for what was necessary for his project, and we paid the difference to upsize that pipe. So I don't have that dollar figure in front of me, but we did pay to upsize that pipe, and I apologize if I remember when you asked me.
Before you clarify that, can I get more clarification on that? Come up. The whole intent of the taxpayer from our boroughs because he was going to do that four hundred thousand dollar upgrade on Pearl Street. We signed on, the city had to be a member of it. We got offered a grant, and then we got stuff that the taxpayer paid three, those forty thousand all bid became that less, we paid three hundred and some thousand out of our general fund. Correct?
It's, we're not forced to. Mayor, it's not the ring.
It's not, it's not agenda to this.
Oh, clarify, we, we were.
We can come back to you if you turn it on and discuss, so we can accurately answer any questions at this time.
We get back to that.
We discussed, we agreed. We, since the bill's, we're getting back.
Okay, so, um. Hold, hold, hold the break in that and act by taking record vote for post twenty twenty-one added law and property tax for fiscal year twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two budget and scheduling dates for one required public hearing on proposed tax rate. And the tax rate, again, is the, uh.
Voter approved.
Voter approved tax rate. And this is the difference on the average market, average taxable and median taxable rate. If the appraisals don't go crazy, we already.
We already have a certified appraisal role, uh, very minimal, uh, under protest because we are mostly residential property, uh, lookout, so we have, even if we do have some under protest, the swing is not great.
So it'll produce for the average, average market, average taxable slight decrease in the annual, um, tax, taxable.
Uh, depending on the value of the house, some of them actually have decreased, um, the way that the rates are calculated, we'll see, um, on an average taxable home, two hundred and forty-eight thousand, uh, you'll actually see the decrease in the taxable of four dollars and thirty-two cents.
That's unless their appraisal goes up.
This is based on the average taxable value provided to us by the certified appraisal role.
And our, our.
We have no control over the appraisal values. It's done by the independent appraisal district. They provide the same appraisal values to all taxing entities within our range discount. So this. The item that we're bringing to y'all, this, at number fifteen, is asking you to, um, accept the proposed tax rate as we propose it to you within the budget. It is the voter approved tax rate. It does allow us to, uh, maintain operations and funding as we presented to you in, in this operating budget. It does produce a increase of about three hundred and ninety-two thousand over last year's added law rate. This is mostly based off of the new property that was added. Um, property seems to be an area that we keep hearing about, and that is one of the ones that does, a portion of it that came on as built out on January first. Only the portion that's available on January first is what we're seeing of value coming in from. What this is, this does is it allows us to have our, um, tax, our INS tax rate at point one eight four, which is just about almost eighteen and a half cents. That allows us to make all of the required debt payments, um, for those, the, we have for the general fund portion only. And then it allows us to have an operating rate of our maintenance and operations of just shy of twenty-three and a half cents. Right, if you'll note, last year, our, the year that we're currently in, our adopted twenty twenty tax rate is forty-two cents, at point four two one three one one. What we are proposing for the twenty twenty-one rate is actually slightly less, at just under forty-two cents, at point four one eight three point seven, and that's per hundred dollar valuation. This is the rate that is provided to you in the proposed budget.
Have we run the budget off of the known revenue rate? Have you ever?
I have. It wasn't great. Um, there's a significant difference if we do use the known revenue rate. Um, in, in honesty, the, the way in which we are forced to calculate the rates these days is the, um, INS rate doesn't change. So that eighteen and a half cents stays no matter what. The, the number that changes when you go between the known revenue and that voter approved is that M and O rate. And that's where we're talking about, um, the employees or the more money for drainage. So if we back that down, that lessens our ability. Not saying you can't do it, it's just at this point, we're proposing to leave it at the voter approved rate. We can always go down. We just can't go up once you guys accept us and we say that that's what we're going to propose in the budget. That doesn't mean we adopt it. It means we're going to propose it, and that's where we're going to hold our public hearing on, which is the second part of what I'm asking you all to do tonight is to set the date for me so that we can keep moving in the budget process.
I just, I feel like we're probably going to have to go to the citizens for a, a bond issue coming up sooner than later.
Correct.
And, uh, I would, you know, if our tax rate, the, yes, the tax rate went down properly,
So.
Oh, now I'm happy, but if we, but our evaluation went up.
Right. So let me share a little bit with you about how, what happens in the back office of finance, and Kevin and I have these really odd conversations. But the way our tax rate is set, we have that debt rate, and the debt rate is based off of what we currently owe. And there's two pieces to the debt. We have the principal, we have the interest. And when you do new debt, you have the ability to front load, back load, or even load your debt. So if we were to go to the count to our citizens and say, hey, we want to do a bond for drainage, say twenty million, which is going to put our payments at around six hundred thousand a year, but our rates are, are, we don't have any room, but in twenty twenty-three, we have a bunch of debt drop off, we can backload it. So we're only paying interest the first couple of years, and it doesn't really affect our, um, debt rate where we push it when we start having debt fall off. And so that eighteen and a half cents pretty much stays constant over an extended period of time, rather than we're at eighteen cents, we go down to fifteen cents, we go back up to nineteen cents, and it becomes a zigzag. If we strategize and strategically plan our debt and organize it appropriately, and at the interest rate that we have right now, it doesn't really have a negative effect to backload it because our rates are less than three percent. So that's how we are able to keep the INS rate flat and it not negatively impact. Because the way the new house bills and the senate bills impacted, once your debt rate drops, it actually negatively affects your ability to fund any of your future operations. So we do not want that to drop. We want to balance our future debt and hold it steady. And that's one of the things that we want, we will visit with you when we do the workshops for funding opportunities for debt and streets or any thing else that you all want to look at during larger projects on.
And, uh, as far as the tax rate, our evaluation went up. We reached rates on water, sewer, gas, and everything, but it felt like we, it's give and take, we were taking a little bit more this year. I know chances, they would realize that we ran a four dollar shape, but we also increased water, sewer, um, gas, and track, and our evaluation plan. As we were presented earlier, and as you can see, there's very few homes in the, in the, uh, area that are less than two hundred dollars off. So, uh, I'm not saying, you know, they're correct on my numbers, Jack, but I, I just said that we could do a little bit more for our citizens by doing the company rate of rate. Two of the other taxing entities in our area are doing that, um, are trying to go over the taxes.
That's definitely an option for you all to decide on. Um, we do have to do a record vote, uh, tonight as to what rate you choose to move forward with and to the date in which we choose to do the public hearing. I will tell you what has been presented to me tonight as a proposed budget. Does include the voter approved rate, um, and you do have the option to change that. Just because you have a public hearing on the voter approved rate does not mean you adopt the voter approved rate. That just means that's what we are holding a public hearing on so that we can move the process forward.
Now, can you say publicly how publicly listed, uh, would you rate it on the, the registered rate?
It just kept getting more red and more red, and finance directors get very nervous when things turn red, so we immediately turn and go to the number that makes it lower.
Would it be, uh, uh, operating one, I guess, the, the base, is that what we were efficient in our operating base and fund balance? Is that very accurate of that?
Yes. So, um, it does affect the fund balance because if your, the, lower your revenues are and without lowering your expenses, then you, you're upside down. So some of the items that we are able to draw on the CDL front because they are non-capital, and that's what some guys would put in there. There are things that we can postpone, for example, uh, we have about eighty thousand dollars in there for going to the cloud for our financial software. We could definitely postpone that eighty thousand, and that'd be about half a cent or point oh oh five off of our tax rate. The problem that that runs into is that you're just referring it. So next year, you've got to make up a long time. Yes. And that, that's the challenge, because of the changes with the senate and the house, it makes it more challenging for us to, to prepare our budget and to have an opportunity for y'all to fund things because we are no longer able to take the larger steps. So we have to incrementally make some increases. And it seems like it's a rash, massive increase, um, but it's really not. So we look at the individual level. And that, you know, like you said, overall, when you're looking at the, the utilities, you have to keep in mind the utilities operate totally independently of our party tax. We have people that pay party tax that do not pay utilities and vice versa.
So again, just to go for tonight, this is just a, to accept a proposal of tax rate, and then have a public hearing, and then we have a public hearing, and then make that that rest of the tax rate.
Yes. So what I'm asking y'all to do tonight is to, um, provide me the rate that you want me to, us to move forward with for the public hearing. As presented, we've included the voter approved rate, and that is what we're prepared to move forward with in the proposed budget. That's not the adopted budget, and it's not the adopted tax rate. It just gives us the ability to schedule our public hearings and do our public notifications. And our public hearing that I'm asking on a step forward is August the twenty-fourth, I'm looking at Kimberly for a shake, uh, at six thirty PM during our regular council meeting. In between then and now, we do have the opportunity, if you want to have a workshop, that we can do over time. This in no way sets the budget, sets the rate in stone. The only thing that really puts in stone is my ability to do the public hearing notice and public, public hearing. Everything else is subject to change.
So just kind of based on time, and I know people, and this is going to be kind of big discussion, um, this year, especially in the neighborhood, maybe we can really do the workshop or do a public hearing?
I'm scheduled to speak on the side of the floor.
The challenge, if we delay making a decision tonight to set this, that delays our ability to work through the budget. We are required by state law, local government code, as well as our charter to adopt our budget by a certain period in time. If not, the budget that we're currently operating on goes into effect with our current tax rate, which means the rate would actually be higher than what we're proposing.
I didn't get to talk, I'm sorry.
Okay, good.
I like hearing y'all talk and, um, really hash these out. I'm Mr. Redditch, four two one, Dade Drive. Um, I really can't believe that we're even considering anything above the known revenue rate. The Texas Legislature put those limits on municipalities for a reason, and it put them on you for a reason because we have crazy budget proposals like this that make no sense at all. We don't fund maintenance, and we sit here and we talk about buying a twenty-five thousand dollar parade float. I can go over it and over it and over it. I can find two hundred and twenty-five dollar, thousand dollars, just like that, to get you down to point three nine known revenue rate. We've got a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar HR packet, we've got a twenty thousand dollar shade canopy, we've got a thirty thousand dollar canopy over the basketball court, and we've got twenty-five thousand dollars for this market street, whatever study. You guys can figure this out. You can get it down to the known revenue rate. You can get him, two guys, that he needs. You can cut out an HR receptionist. Receptionist here, come on, give me a break. I've called here three times today. I would straight into your voicemail system, I pressed the number, and I got Kevin's office, just like that. I didn't need to talk to anyone. Don't tell me you need a receptionist to answer the phone for your developers. This is ridiculous. You guys, catch your budget. We've all cut our budgets. You go back and you redline, and you tell your city manager to get it in check, just like the house bill, uh, the senate bill too did, and they said, keep it at the known revenue rate because we have city governments and, and, or county governments all over the state taking advantage of their system during COVID periods, during times of unemployment, during times of disaster. It's ridiculous that we're even considering going up eight percent in this, uh, whatever rate it is that he's decided to put in here. It's ridiculous. Known revenue rate, cut your budget. We all do it. I can eat on fifty bucks a week. I have to do it sometimes, and you all, we can figure out how to run lean, run smart so you can develop. Stop delaying on debt and putting it off to the next generation. Stop that. Stop this silly swamp of debt and INS and all this crap. Get it in the budget, get it paid down, just like we all have to do in our planners. You have a responsibility to us. We are the taxpayers. We fund this. Known revenue rate, vote on it tonight, let them go on with their budget process. It's real easy. Somebody make, uh, a motion, known revenue rate, somebody submit it, and move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard. Need more comments? Question?
Take a definition. Take a definition of the, of the rate she's talking about. Is the voter approval rate, does that mean that's the most you can raise without a voter approval?
Prayer. That's still, that's still a state law.
The maximum you allow. But I think we're in a disaster, so you could raise it more.
We could go up to eight percent because we're in a disaster cleared area.
More. No, I, I was going to. Or the minimum rate.
And we can do the minimum rate as well, and we chose not to honor those.
Be moral.
If the motions made, uh, I'd avoid the voter approval, the known revenue rate, we set the public meetings, that rate can be changed at that time?
That rate can be changed.
When you, whichever way we go, you can run.
No.
Tonight would set the cap, would be the maximum, and then.
Yes.
You don't need to argue that, how do people go up? Does the rest go up?
You, you will set a cap tonight which we cannot exceed, and the date of the public hearing. hearing. Everything else is subject. You can drop that rate at any point in time, before adoption or on adoption. We do have two readings of that ordinance, so you do have the opportunity to set that. Tonight just sets the cap and gives us the ability to go forward in our process and get the public hearing set.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the known revenue rate.
I'll second that.
A motion is set. Any further discussion?
You have three little numbers, go ahead, the next one. The number, who, 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 who?
The, I have to go back and recalculate, and then I consider you.
Do a basic repair of this stuff.
I can do that for you tomorrow.
The known revenue rate. Is this, is the cap, we can't go above that, after this vote.
That's correct.
Further discussion? Go, word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Aye.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor? No.
Still need to set the date.
I need one more motion. To propose the tax rate that you gave us and schedule one public hearing on August the 24th, 2021 at 6:30 PM.
Make a motion to set a date for our public hearing for the tax rate on August 24th at 6:30.
And I need you to say the tax rate.
Oh.
Sorry. Of the known revenue tax rate.
Motion is set. Any further discussion? Word one.
Aye.
Word two.
Aye.
Word three.
Aye.
Word four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. Thank you. I believe that covers it.
Yes. Yes, sir, thank you.
Item 16, hearing recorded on status of COVID-19 and response status. Got one of the latest cases. This is yesterday, I'm sorry, today. At 5:00, newest numbers for random counties are 1,050 confirmed cases, which is 60 more than yesterday, 53 more than on Friday, the sixth, and 138 confirmed cases since our last council meeting. There are 177 active cases, 370 frequent probable cases, and 46 fatalities, that's up to four from the last count. There'll be a clinic and a testing available on Thursday from 3 to 7, full information centers, and it's for the Pfizer vaccine. And they're asking people to register ahead of time, but they will pay walk-ins, but registration will guarantee you a shot. And I happened to be over at the 2470 yard yesterday, and, and they were full with COVID walk-in cases, so people weren't, weren't for sale. And I understand hospitals yesterday, they had the emergency meeting. Corpus Christi hospitals are at 130% capacity, and I know one person that took 120 hours to get a hospital room, and there were some people. Today, it took them about 30 hours to get them, but that was not for COVID, that's really different condition. So it's got to know, yeah, so don't get hurt.
Put a bubble around you.
Yeah, COVID virus.
Mayor, I can tell you from how markets all over Texas, half my staff at Corpus has COVID, none in Victoria, none of Houston. Corpus is serious. So if you do it out of Corpus, you should be done.
Stay out of Corpus. Stay out of it. I can easily do that.
You can't at Corpus, be careful here, it's pretty hot, it's rising, and also, just protect yourself all the time. That's all that. Item 17, report for council. Word one, anything to report?
I'm going to do council person orientation Thursday and Friday. Who messes?
That's it.
Two.
I have nothing to report, but father of an 18-year-old now, so say a word.
Old man.
More to it.
I would like to thank staff for presenting the budget we got today and allowing the new ones here to do what we did and look forward to the same, the same the next, the next item, move forward. Thank you. Very well done.
I'm gonna second that. I know you guys work really, really hard, and I do appreciate it. I know this is difficult, this conversation, and we haven't had this conversation before, but I do appreciate all your hard work that y'all do, and really, really do. So thank you. School starts next week, so yay, kids will be gone, and that's cool, so that's a good thing. And I guess that's about it.
Okay, thank you. I think Thursday, I believe, the teachers' welcome ceremonies at the high school, Thursday morning, they drink. I believe everyone's invited to that. Free, it's the welcome of teachers.
Appreciate it.
Start today, okay? And again, everyone, thanks to the staff, all the hard work. Thanks to the community for showing up. We value your commitment. And tomorrow is, having my support and everybody in there.
What were you thinking? What were you thinking?
Is he drinking?
How much was Phil's grocery bill?
Lot less than $50.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion is set. All on paper.
Aye.
Thank you, all, that worked.
I'm sorry, what was the time, sir? Thank you. Can't hear.
All got the airline, so we're talking about seven. Hey, have a good time.
Yep, Chief Kirk.
All right, so probably the anniversary of Captain Wolf.
Step to the back, and we'll not come back for you.